This is Baltimore City Council Budget and Appropriations Committee. We are here for Council Resolution 18-0091R, Budget Oversight Hearings for Baltimore City Police Department. I am joined by, starting on my far left, Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District; Councilwoman Shannon Snead, 13th District; Councilman Brandon Scott, 2nd District; Councilman Leon Pinkett, Vice Chair of the Committee, 7th District; Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District; Council President Bernard C. Jack Young; and Vice President of the Council, Councilwoman Shannon Green Middleton from the 6th District; as well as Councilman Ryan Dorsey from the 3rd District. Also joined, sitting in for Marguerite Curran, is Matt Peters, who's going to be staffing the committee today. We have Karan Banks and Karen Stokes representing Mayor Catherine Pugh. I think that is everyone. Before we begin, a couple of quick housekeeping rules. If you could please turn your cellphones to off, silent, vibrate, or something else that doesn't make noise, that would be greatly appreciated. This hearing is being streamed live on www.charmtv.tv/watch-live, as well as Comcast Channel 25. So I'm going to ask that anyone who's testifying, if you would kindly speak into the microphone clearly like this. I may interrupt you if you're not doing that. Please accept my apologies in advance. Before we begin, I'd like to turn it over to Council President Young for brief remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I want to thank everyone for coming to this hearing. This is another part of the council's oversight hearing of the police department as it relates to their budget. There were a lot of questions that were asked previous, and we're hoping to get those answers back today. I want to thank the Chair for this opportunity to give brief and opening remarks. So we're looking forward to having a great dialogue with you all this evening on how we can lower the overtime rate while still maintaining a police presence throughout our neighborhoods. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now I'm going to turn it over to Councilman Brandon Scott, who chairs the Public Safety Committee. As everyone knows, these are a two-part set of hearings where we work with Budget and Appropriations Committee first. We'll be taking a five-minute recess after that's done, and then turning it over to Chairman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, everyone, for being here. I guess I would like to first start by saying how disappointed I am that the Police Commissioner, or interim Police Commissioner, is not here this evening. As is noted from my colleagues, that we moved this date at the behest of the Police Department, and we were not notified at that time that the interim Police Commissioner would not be here. While we all know that conferences are a very important and part of a public official's life, when you're vying for a job, if you don't show up now, you won't show up if you get confirmed. So just want to say that for the record, that is, to me, unacceptable that interim Police Commissioner is not here. But we will accept Deputy Commissioner Bonaparte with open arms and not hold that against him. Secondly, just want to thank you guys for being here again today. We know that this is very important for us. We know that the Police Department's budget is a lion's share of the city's budget through the tax dollars of the citizens of Baltimore. But we also know that we have to do better in how we not only give out that budget, but monitor it specifically when we're talking to overtime. So I'm glad to have you guys here this evening, and look forward to talking to you about improvements over last month. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'd like to turn it over to Councilman Leon Pinkett, who's the chief sponsor of this half of the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank, first and foremost, all of my colleagues for being here this evening, because I think this is a critical hearing that we're having as it relates to the police overtime and budget, and a discussion that needs to go on. So I know that, and looking forward that this being the second in a series of meetings that we will have, be able to show that we've done, made much progress over our initial meeting. I would be remiss to not also echo my colleague, Councilman Scott's sentiments as it relates to the absence of the Acting Police Commissioner this evening. And I know this evening, later on, during a separate committee, we'll talk more about police strategy and how that impacts public safety. But from our perspective, all of that discussion is irrelevant if we don't get the budget right, if we don't get overtime right. And so I don't know how it happens in other cities, but from this council's perspective, if you can't manage the budget, you can't manage the police department. And so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmen. Before we begin, I have some brief remarks. I would also like to echo Councilman Scott and Councilman Pinkett. I hope that moving forward, the Police Commissioner will see utility in these hearings, and I hope that he will be an active participant moving forward. I'd also like to thank the Mayor's Office, as well as several of her senior team, Drew Vedder, Kendra Parlock, as well as Chief Gillis, who I know can't be here this evening because of a significant accident in the family. As I understand, everything's going to be all right. But I would like to thank Karen and those senior administration officials for working with us and appreciating the importance, as well as Bob Sennemy, our Budget Director, of course, of these hearings. And, you know, I think Councilman Pinkett hit the nail on the head that if we can't get the budget right, how can we be expected to get much else right? So I do think that these hearings are critically important. Before we begin, colleagues, I know that there is, there's been much discussion about the Internal Review Board, or the IRB's, report on the death of Detective Suter. Until such a time, that the entire council has been fully briefed on that matter. And I know that the planning for that is in process right now. I would like to ask that we refrain from any questions surrounding the IRB's report or the death of Detective Suter. With that, I'd like to turn it over to the Police Department. Deputy Commissioner, if you could introduce all the officials that are here with your agency. Before we do that, Drew, Kendra, Bob, if you could quickly introduce yourselves, just so folks at home know who you are, as we'll be deferring to you, I assume, at some point throughout the hearing. If you could just say your name and your office and title.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the council. My name is Drew Vedder, Director of the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice.
Good evening, I'm Kendra Parlock. I'm Director, Mayor's Office of Sustainable Solutions.
Good evening, Bob Sennemy, Budget Director.
Thank you. Deputy Commissioner, I turn it over to you, and please introduce everyone. Folks, if you could just raise your hand when the Deputy Commissioner introduces you, and then we'll get started.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, council members, Council President Young. Thank you for having us here this evening. We hope that we are able to answer many questions that you have had of the department regarding the budget, staffing, health and wellness of our police officers as we begin to move this agency forward, and hoping that tonight will be a reflection of the hard work that the many men and women of this agency are doing every day towards making a better Baltimore. On behalf of Commissioner Tugle, who extends his deepest apologies about not being able to attend here this evening, I'm going to now introduce members of our staff, who are going to help us get through this presentation, and so that everyone will have a full understanding as to what efforts are being made every day in the agency to, again, make this a better police department. First, I'd like to introduce Acting Deputy Commissioner of the Strategic Support Bureau, Colonel Perry Stanfield; Colonel Darren Garrity, who is the Chief of Patrol; Colonel Byron Conaway, Chief of Detectives; Colonel Melvin Russell, Chief of Community and Youth Affairs; Lieutenant Colonel Richard Worley of the Homeland Security Division; Lieutenant Colonel Margaret Barilaro of Records and Management; Chief Steve Odell, who's over our Management and Sciences Division; Major Brian Hans of Recruitment; Major Stephanie Lanzy of Internal Affairs; Director Amy Guevara, hi, Amy, for our Human Resources; Director Paula Williams of the Fiscal Section; and Director Vernon Heron of Health and Wellness; and Lieutenant Deanna Eflin from my office.
Deputy Commissioner, I'm sorry, one other housekeeping item. I forgot to note that Councilman Zeke Cohen and Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer are not in attendance this evening in observance of the Rosh Hashanah holiday. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Again, good evening. So we're going to walk through this PowerPoint presentation that we have put together, understanding that the last meeting, the hearing that was held, there were a lot of questions raised. During that time period, those questions went, as you all are aware, to the Commissioner's office and had to be fielded or disseminated throughout the agency, so we can get the proper responses for you. So we're hoping this evening that we're going to cover several of these items today. And if you have any, obviously, any questions that you may have, feel free to ask those questions. Again, our presentation will be directed, in many instances, to our experts here in these subject matters, where they will weigh in and also be up here at the podium to speak specifically about their slides. So I'm going to start now with our introduction. Health and Wellness. Dr. Her, I'm sorry, Mr. Ron, I would ask that you come up and just go over briefly about what you've been doing over the course of, since you've been here, really, in the real development and creation of our Health and Wellness section. He's doing a fantastic job in terms of being able to get our agency and our officers into a better place, so that they're able to work more productively within the agency.
Thank you. We've also been joined by Michael Huber, who, while not a new face to anyone in this room, is the incoming Legislative Director for Council President Jack Young. BPD?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, and men and women of the Baltimore City Council. My name is Vernon Heron. I'm the Director of Officer Safety and Wellness. Last year, there were more police officers that committed suicide than were killed in the line of duty. Alcoholism, divorce, and obesity, or some other stressors that impact the police department. These are national statistics that we examine in order to develop a robust, comprehensive officer safety and wellness program for the Baltimore City Police Officers. So I'm going to highlight some of the things that we're doing in order to manage the stressors of police work. Since January, we have put on a two-hour class to all of our officers regarding managing their stress. These classes include breathing techniques, physical fitness, nutrition, decompression training, and mindfulness. We have also been able to contract the EAP, which is BHS. BHS is an organization that provides counseling, financial counseling, family counseling, stress counseling, and other support mechanisms that support our officers. The average usage of a EAP nationally for police officers is 5%. Year-to-date, the Baltimore City Police Officers have utilized this program about 7.5%. In August of 2017, the Officer Safety and Wellness Unit initiated a proactive mental health response team. This response team provides immediate mental health support to every officer who's been involved in a critical incident. Mainly, police officers involved shootings. Before officers go home after their tour of duty, they are debriefed by a mental health professional. Post-traumatic stress syndrome is an illness that impacts police officers, military personnel, and it is something that sets in your central nervous system. And unless you get counseling in order to deal with that post-traumatic stress, it will come out in other ways. For the past two years, we have identified self-referrals from officers, from commanders. These self-referrals could include officers that have lost loved ones or experienced some other personal crisis. We have a 24/7 hotline for our officers to contact BHS and to get a free and confidential counseling session. Additional to that, BHS offers an annual mental health checkup for all our police officers. We have currently embarked upon pop-up health fairs, which help facilitate holistic approach to wellness to all Baltimore City Police Officers. We are, currently have been at five districts. We anticipate touching every district in Baltimore City. We also have a support and guidance program. A support and guidance program is where an officer is experiencing personal issues, and they are able to come to my office, and we're able to refer them to certain resources to help them with their issues. What you're seeing now is a, parts of a brochure that markets BHS. BHS is our EAP. We did not want to use stock photos when we were marketing BHS. So those officers are actually police officers in the Baltimore City Police Department. They allowed us to use their likeness in order to bring awareness to mental health issues and physical fitness issues in the Baltimore City Police Department. So finally, we have a trained therapy dog, Penny. Penny is a, our therapy dog that not only visits officers who are experiencing post-traumatic stress syndrome, but she also goes to Family Crimes Unit. She goes to schools. She goes to whatever areas within the city or the police department that she needed in order to help those officers who might be experiencing difficult times just to have five minutes of relief of dealing with any stressors they might be having in life. That's my presentation. Are there any questions?
We're going to hold off on questions until BPD concludes the presentation.
Okay. Thank you.
So if I can back up, Paula, go back a few slides for me, please, just to kind of go over what we will be doing today. You've just heard from the Health and Wellness section of our presentation. Our next segment will be an overview, and it's getting down to some of the numbers as it relates to staffing, things of that nature there, so that we're able to provide you with a real detailed kind of look as to where our current personnel are, the demographics of the Baltimore Police Department, and all of those type of matters as well. The next item after that, we'll talk about staffing. And then we'll follow up, and our final bullet point would be over overtime trends, and then go right into discussion. So at this point of the presentation, we'd like to, I'm sorry. And we apologize for the layout here. We took a snapshot from files that we are working with in order to give you the numbers that you were requesting. We have sent these numbers to you and made printed copies as well for your discussion. At this time, I would ask Director Williams to come up and just go over her segment of this presentation. And again, any questions that you may have, we'll just hold to the end and have a more in-depth conversation about.
Thank you. And again, I know Chief Gillis isn't here, but I'd like to thank him for the collaboration on putting this together. I know we spent, he and I spent a lot of time on Thursday and Friday. And Councilman Scott and Councilman Pinkett were involved in that, so please extend our thanks to him for that.
Yes, sir, I will. Thank you.
Council President would like that image a little bigger in the future, but I think we're getting close.
Absolutely, sir. Good afternoon, everyone. And so, again, these are the questions that were sent over by Councilman Costello. Yes, the format is a little bit different, and it is a snapshot. And we will work on getting that bigger for our next month's meeting. First of all, we start off with the exact positions that we currently have filled for the month of August. Currently, our staffing is at 2,981 employees. This includes 2,191 sworn officers, 438 civilians, 52 contractors. And then the next line item you will see is that it is 164 trainees. And at this minute, the number is exactly 28 or so lower, and that is due to timing, timing issues. And what I mean by timing is the amount of time that it takes HR orders to get through to DHR and BBMR. So later on, Captain Brown will give our numbers that are in the academy itself. And with that being said, we have 125 orders that were sent over and that are currently not moved over to actual police positions. But when certain reports are ran, it actually still says "Police Officer Training." So that's an internal process, and it's only due to timing issues. With that being said, we have 11 cadets, and we have approximately 11, yes, cadets in the academy. For the month of August, we see that we have approximately 13 separations. We see that retirement was nine, and resignments was two, and terminations was actually two for the month. New hires for the month, there were nine new hires for the month of August. So we were asked to give a net change. And the net change for sworn officers from the month of July through August, we saw that there was 27 more actual separations. The net change is a negative number. Civilians, there was a negative two, and for cadets, we have a negative one. Overall, our negative separations, or the net change, is a negative 30. Suspensions, as of the month of August, 31st ending, we had 72 persons that were on some type of suspension. For vacancies, we have, the total number of vacancies, 306. And I want to address, the net change for positions would be seven. But again, I've already stated that the net change in actual positions were 30. So one would say that the numbers, they do not agree, they do not line up. Again, it is only due to timing issues, timing issues, and when the orders are actually executed and moved through the chain. On medical, we have 281. And on maternal and fraternal leave, we have 14. Actually, there are two women on maternal leave, and 12 men that are on fraternal leave. Additional services that we provide, we have 11 auxiliary police officers. And the number for the Explorer Program, and we do have Colonel Russell here, who can talk further on the Explorer Program itself. Because this is a new school year, the numbers are not in yet. But we, hopefully, we will have those exact numbers on the next reporting date. But again, we still have someone who is specialized to speak on that program if you have questions at the end. Moving forward, we have a schedule of our academy classes. And we see that we have one class that is in session with 37 members. And we anticipate in November that we will have an additional 40. Again, in January 2019, we anticipate we will have an additional 40. And again, in March 2019, we anticipate that we will have an additional 40. If you could look at the graphing, I did take into consideration and plot out those new positions in the personnel staffing. At the bottom of the worksheet, we go into detail about the particular savings that we show. It does not include the civilian plan as of yet, and it does not include it because we are still working on it. You guys may have seen a copy of it, I'm not sure, a draft copy of it, but we did not project those positions in our savings numbers at this time. But we did do so for the cadets. So at this time, we are projecting a $1.2 million savings as far as vacant positions. Our next slide is education and training.
Good evening. I'm Captain Sean Brown of the Education and Training Section. As you can see on the chart, we currently have three classes that's in a academy right now, a total of 97 trainees altogether. The class that's next anticipated on graduating will be on November the 2nd. They will be hitting the street with 35 BPD officers. To follow, the next class will be Class 1802, will be graduating in January. There will be 29 officers. And in 1803, will be graduating in March with 33 Baltimore City Police Officers.
So again, just the, the next slide shows our workforce demographics through August 31st, where we have the agency broken down specifically through rank, through nationalities, through also male or female. And as you can see, currently, the agency right, I'm sorry. Currently, the agency right now has a total of, showing 2,491 total sworn members. The minority number is 1,432, or 49.5%. Female total is 396, or 13.7%. African-American males, 736 total sworn, at 25.5%. African-American female, total of 272, or 9.4% of that total number. Caucasian males, 1,061, or 36.7%. Caucasian females, 97, 3.4%. Currently Hispanics, 250 sworn Hispanic males, at 8.6%. 25 Hispanic females, at just under 10%. 42 Asian males, 1.5%. Two Asian females, just less than 1%. And Native Americans, we have a total of six males and no female. Also, as it relates to, in our civilian capacity as well, there's a total of 438 civilians on the agency. Of that 438, 378 of them are minorities. 319 of them are female. 52% are African-American males. 237 are African-American females. Caucasian, 60, or 13.7%. Caucasian females, 77, or 17.6%. And currently, there are no Hispanic males or female in the civilian positions. Asians, we have three males and four females. And we also have four Native American males and one Native American female. So if you look at departmental totals, we have, of the 2,929 presented, 1,810 of those positions are minorities. 715 of them are female. 788 males, I'm sorry, African-American males. 509 African-American females. 1,121 Caucasian males. 174 female. Hispanic are 250 males. 25 females. And Asian, there are 45 males and six females. And Native American, we have a total of 10 and one female. And that's through August 31st of this year. Colonel Patrol strength?
So the patrol strength?
He's talking to the mic, sir. I hear we're getting wireless mics at some point in the future.
I'm sorry about that, Councilman. So for the Patrol Division, let me pull that up real fast. I know the one report has one thing, but we track it a little differently. At the Patrol Division, we track it much more on a granular level. So let me pull this up real fast. So we have 686, 676 full-duty officers that man the Patrol Division. Out of that 676, there's, I'm sorry, I apologize, there's 800. Out of that six hundred and seventy-six, there's, I apologize, there's eight hundred and forty-six officers that are assigned to the patrol division. Out of that, six hundred and seventy-six are actually full-duty officers that man the patrol division with a negative of one hundred and seventy in transitional vacancies. The transitional vacancies are broken down, we break them down on each level, which would be limited duty for a total of seventy-one. The medical, which is, they're not actually working at all, where they're not working in limited duty capacity, is twenty-five. Officers that are suspended is twenty-two. Detailed out of patrol and full duty is sixteen. Detailed out of patrol on, that is non-full duty, which would be a light duty capacity, is twenty-three. Military leave is nine. And terminal leave is three, which is meaning that they are separating from the agency. We then go down and then we have the actual DAT numbers, which actually include our DAT officers. We have included in that is the Inner Harbor Unit, the Casino Unit, the Neighborhood Community Officers, the Admin Bureau, which is in each district. We have people in each district, foot officers and others that are assigned to the patrol Out of that, it's a hundred and fourteen were authorized, eighty-four are actually full duty. With a minus twenty-four and the same thing as transitional vacancies, we break that down the same as well. We then have the sergeant numbers, would you like the sergeant's numbers as well? Okay. So we have a hundred and fifty-one that are authorized, we have a hundred and fifty-five that are actually assigned to the patrol division, which of that, a hundred and twenty-nine are full-duty sergeants. Within a transitional vacancy of the thirteen, and again, that is broken down through light duty, medical, suspended, detailed out full duty, detailed out non-full duty, military and terminal leave. For lieutenants, we have thirty-four that are authorized, thirty-eight are assigned. Of that thirty-eight, twenty-seven are actually working the street in all of their capacities. We break that down the same as well, which gives us only a negative five, which I'm not sure why five and, well, yeah, five and twenty-seven is thirty-two, so I'm not sure how that number adds up and I apologize for the mistake.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is that the, or anything else, or before we get into questions?
We have a little bit more for you.
Sure, please.
So before we get to our next segment here, we're going to be, which we're going to be talking about staffing. We understand that this obviously has been, you know, the highlight and one of our pain points with the agency, unfortunately. And I just wanted to kind of just give you kind of a overview of what we are doing collectively, working with the mayor's office and with the Baltimore Police Department internally in, I'm sorry.
Please.
In trying to improve and increase our staffing numbers with the agency. So I just want to read a little bit, brief things that we're, some things that we're doing. So BPD's staffing challenges, we know that they're very well documented. We are currently operating at about five hundred police officers fewer than we did in two thousand twelve. The hiring and attrition patterns result in the agency consistently carrying over a hundred vacancies at one time. I mean, it's important to note that the mayor's administration, as well as the police commission, have made it clear that building the police department back to full-duty strength in patrol is essential and it is a top priority of the agency. I can tell you personally that since I've been back here, whether it was Commissioner De Souza or just myself as well, it is absolutely a top priority of the agency. And I know that Commissioner Tugwell is the exact same way. He took dramatic efforts into increasing staffing, having us look at internally where we could kind of reassign and redeploy people in order to beef up patrol because I came on this agency back in nineteen, I'm sorry, nineteen eighty-seven. And there were times when I'd walked into the roll call room and those roll call rooms were fully staffed. There were officers in all three sectors. You had a foot off, you had a foot contingency, you had two flex teams there, and it was just a full complement of officers. It's not that way today, unfortunately, when you go to any of our nine district roll calls. They are understaffed, we are aware of it, and we are doing everything in our powers that we can to be able to increase those numbers for several reasons. And one of those reasons in particular is because of officer safety and also to be able to provide a quality service to our community because we know the importance of doing that. So how do we get there? And we have basically a operational plan that we are doing as an agency, working in conjunction with the mayor's administration to do that. And essentially, it's four steps. The first step is to increase and improve hiring. Since mid-June, when the online application launched, the Baltimore Police Department has attracted a hundred new applicants per week, over four times more than we previously did. More applications from Baltimore. In August two thousand eighteen, more Baltimore residents passed the initial stage of the police department hiring process than in any month since at least January of two thousand thirteen. More applications from women. We gave you the stats just now of our, the number of women that are on the agency. We would like to improve that number. We are certainly a fair and diverse agency and we want to, as best we can, accelerate those numbers because we understand and recognize that there are deficiencies in that number. So more applications for women. Since mid-June, twenty-five percent of the applications to the police department are from women compared to seventeen percent of applications in two thousand eighteen prior. We have already received more applications from both Baltimore residents and from women so far this year than in all of two thousand seventeen. And we're only, at this particular time of this report, was eight months into that reporting. The second part of this is civilianization. You're going to hear, Chief Odell is going to talk to you at length about our plans to do a robust civilianization plan for the agency. We've heard the council talk, speak this message on several occasions. We've heard you loud and clear. We recognize that it's something in order to make ourselves more efficient. But it also goes back to what we talked about. There are not enough police officers on the street. How best to do that than look internally as to what we have inside? Can the function of a police officer, a police sergeant or a police lieutenant be done by a civilian? Chief Odell is going to talk to you about that at length, what the plan is and working in conjunction with the mayor's office and how we are going to slowly but deliberately change the inner workings of the agency from the Administrative Bureau, Strategic Services Bureau, more into a civilianization effort on the police department's half.
Deputy Commissioner, quick, we're going to hold questions till the end, but just a quick question for clarification. The civilianization plan, that's a, that's a work product that BPD is working on?
Yes.
Do we have an expected time? I can't recall. Do we have an expected timeframe for when that's going to be delivered?
Chief Odell.
Delivered to city as part of this or delivered to DHR?
Just produced, published. And I assume it doesn't contain sensitive information?
No, no, no. I would say probably Commissioner will review it beginning of next week, so maybe the middle end of next week. Right now, we've got it into BBMR and I was talking to Bob earlier, we've got a meeting set up to make sure we work through the mathematics of it, of what he has and what he sees and his questions he has, but it is well in progress.
So we should end it next week, sounds about right?
Yeah, I think it'll need a little bit more work. I mean, I've seen the draft. We have to really go through that in detail to make sure that this is not a shell game, that we're actually getting what we need, so there's more information we'll need. So I would just caution, I think it's going to be a little bit longer than just a couple weeks.
Near future, though.
Yeah, near future.
For now, okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, chief. On that.
I don't mean to be the pessimist of the day, but Mr. Chair, I just want to remind you that it wasn't Mr. Sinema, but we heard those same words around this time last year, the near future. So if we could get a hard date that we can hold them to for this, I think that would be for good for the council and the citizens.
Thank you, Councilman. Bob, can we get a hard date?
So our role in this is to make sure that, you know, we've seen a lot of plans come through that, you know, our role is to make sure we look at this, to make sure we are actually going to get the savings. I think that's going to take at least a few weeks to make sure we can sort that out. I would say we can report back at the next hearing of what we have found and any next steps from there. So I think we can promise to do that by the next month. But it's very important to me that if we do this and we commit to folks of what we're doing, that there's actually savings.
I certainly appreciate that and I think all my colleagues do. I think I can safely speak for everyone. We would prefer that it's done right and it sounds like you all are doing the work in collaboration to make sure it gets done right. So could we plan on the administration emailing a copy of that to us, say, a day or two in advance of the next hearing or be prepared to discuss in full detail the status of it at the next hearing?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Deputy Commissioner.
Yes, sir, thank you so much. But also notwithstanding in terms of the budget, potential savings with that, Bob, also hoping, obviously, to restaff patrol, which is really what we are looking for in terms as an agency as well, to get more police officers on the street and how we best do We know that Mayor Pugh has funded an additional one hundred positions in the city's fiscal year twenty-nine budget, bringing a total sworn vacancy to just over two hundred. This action is representative of the administration's ambitious goal to restore BPD to a full staffing in patrol. However, it is also recognized that filling this number of positions will take time. Therefore, the police department will be using the funding from vacant sworn positions to fund gradual civilianization of the agency. So that's where we're moving to. We think that that's a solid plan to move forward and it's something that the mayor's administration, as well as the police department, are looking forward to doing in the future.
Thank you.
The third part of our plan is the staff or reallocation of efficiency. The police department has made several large reallocations of sworn personnel. Everyone here is aware that we have looked at ourselves internally. We have put in, we have reassigned approximately a hundred, definitively, a hundred and fourteen police officers from within the agency. And we put those members right back into the patrol division. It was a hard decision to make. We had to be smarter, but definitely more efficient about what we were doing. There are also other steps that we're doing too, as well as things such as, we were meeting this morning, this afternoon, Drew Vetter and myself and members of our staff, even things, how can we be efficient as an agency? Whether it's the staffing of the telephone reporting unit to a robust numbers, increasing our city watch camera operators, and all of these things directly impact and coincide with the crime fight. We have to be smarter. It's not just our agency that is struggling with hiring law enforcement agencies across the country. It's unless you're in NYPD, they seem to be the only people that don't have a problem with this. But most agencies, and we are certainly in jurisdictional challenges with Baltimore County and Anne Arundel County, who have robust incentive measures that they are partaking on and attempting to lure some of our officers away from us. We understand the challenges of it, so we have to obviously look internally, how can we can be smarter and more efficient in the crime fight and be able to best utilize the resources that we have available in order to continue to provide excellent service to the city. So the fourth part, oh, and in addition to that, again, the consent decree staffing has required that a staffing study be made and we know that that is working, the draft has come out. There have been some revisions and we are working with them and trying to get that final product delivered as well. And then last but not least is the shift schedule. This has been, since I've gotten here and had to re-acclimate myself with the patrol division, it has been certainly a challenge. It is, I would say, a large percent of why we are experiencing such of a turnover with our young officers in the agency. The four, the four-ten just doesn't work for the city. We are here, myself and the chief of patrol and other members, Major Hanley and others are working very hard in the negotiation process with the FOP. That's about as far as I can talk about it. But I will tell you that there is a real effort on our part to try to make a better patrol schedule for the officers. It's better for the officers, it's better for the agency, it's better for the economic, for the agents, I'm sorry, for the city as well. We know that it's costing us a lot. More importantly is that, you know, it affects officer safety. And again, we talked about the drafting that's occurring with our officers and that it's just not, it's just not smart business for us. So we are working with the FOP, negotiating with them and amongst ourselves in how to improve the work schedule so this way we'll be more efficient and a better working and a better quality of life for our police officers. And overall, when our officers are feeling good about their job and knowing that they can work and get off at a regular time like the rest of the world does, we think that they will be able to retain officers better. And we should also be able to impact some of the overtime expenditures that you're seeing in the budget, hence hopefully reducing some of those drafting. So our next slide I'll move on to in this part of leg of the presentation. Again, what does increased staffing do? Violence reduction. It reduces the overtime spending reductions. And how do we increase staffing? Increasing our recruitment and hiring, we talked about that. Increasing our patrol staffing, we've done that. We are actually looking again. We talked about the civilianization process that Chief Odell is going to talk about. Again, everything is surrounding patrol. We will be a patrol division police department and we need to do that obviously methodically so not to impact too severely some of the other disciplines within the agency as well. The next thing is our patrol schedule, we talked about that. We are working very hard to get a better patrol schedule in play and the civilianization and professionalization portion of this as well. So with that, I will, here's again, this slide here, if you look at your presentation, and I'll just go over this, I guess in the interest of time.
Deputy Commissioner, I'd just ask if you could do your best to briefly wrap things up.
Yes, sir.
Because we have a number of.
I could see that.
Eagerly anticipated questions from our colleagues.
Okay. Yes, sir. Again, I'll just briefly go over this. As you can see, our weekly applications that we're receiving, the goals reflecting our recent weeks, and you can clearly see that we are heading in the right direction as it relates to our hiring efforts and getting applications, particularly since the online component has come into play, where people are able to come in and become police officers online. Our hiring and attrition numbers, and I'll just move to, one of the things that, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, would you like me to go over the overtime reduction? These are some of the questions.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I will briefly talk about that. I mean, we certainly have talked about this since we've gotten here and it's come to, come on our radar, was, you know, there were past practices of just open checkbooks within the agency. You know, there was not enough accountability by supervision, there were not enough, you know, benchmarks in terms of what that reduction would look like. We have addressed structural staffing issues and we also are putting in tighter, and we have implemented tighter fiscal constraints and have put a real stringent approval process in there. We've changed the policy within our agency. We are holding our direct supervisors, our frontline supervisors, as well as commanders. The commissioners made it very clear that command members will be held accountable for overtime, radical overtime expenditures in their area. And since we have put these measures in place, and Chief Odell, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that we, what's our savings so far this year?
Fourteen percent as compared to last year.
Year-to-date?
Yeah, year-over-year and then year-to-date, I think we're looking at closer to twenty percent, eighteen percent.
Right, so we're heading in the right direction. Despite that, I mean, we, you know, you know, we're still in the crime fight and we have not reduced our man-hours or our service to the community in doing all of these things. It's just about, we had to trim the fat and make things more accountable for the agency. So again, the majority of overtime expenditures is coming from the patrol bureau, we're helping, we're. We're helping... We're hoping that the schedule will fix some of this. And again, the tighter controls lead to less overtime spending, as we know. And these are just some slides with that. As you can see, this one here breaks down the last pay period ending in 8/18 in overtime. That slide there shows the actual man-hours and the amount of money that was spent within each one of the... whether it was Patrol, CID, or in the civilian side as well. So I'll let Chief Odell come up to the podium right now, and he'll just give you a brief overview of the civilianization and professionalization efforts from the agency. Thank you.
So to keep it brief, civilianization is happening, and we're very, very excited about it.
Amen.
So what's... That's going to include, at least, as an overview, it'll... The number could change slightly, and that's when you'll get what it actually will become. But right now, it's looking like 80 sworn vacancies, maneuvering to 90, 95 approximately, between 90 and 95 civilians. That's the offset difference in the actual value of the positions, budgeted value of the positions. And that's going to cover Phase One, and overall, that's management services, so like HR, fiscal, asset management, anything in evidence or related. And then some other areas outside of that that are going to be touched by the consent decree like OPR. So that's adding additional civilian investigators, or adding, actually, not additional, but actually adding civilian investigators. So that'll be Phase One of that as well. And then it includes a component for allocated personnel to every single district at the appropriate classification, because I think what also is going on in the department is that the... Many of the civilian positions are underclassified for the work that truly needs to be done. So that's also going to happen along with this plan, and it's going to create some career ladders for people that don't currently exist. And it's really an exciting measure as a whole. I mean, this is really one of those things that you're going to be able to point to that, say, that changed the game, and, you know, a Bob reference, being worried about a shell game, you know? I don't know exactly what that means, but it won't happen. It's not possible, really, in this particular sense. I mean, unless you look at a shell game, it's simply you have one thing and you move it to another. Well, we're going to put a civilian in a sworn spot, and they're going to move, that's a shell game. That is happening. But it's not going to come back to our job.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure, as we talk about this, there has to be a sworn person doing work, and that person has to go back and backfill work that was being done somewhere else on overtime in order for us to get savings for us. So that's the key, is that if you just create a bunch of new civilian positions and a sworn person is still sitting at a desk doing that same work, that's not savings for the city. So the trick here is, you create the new position, the person who's in a uniform who is doing some kind of civilian work is back into patrol or somewhere else in the department to make sure we get the savings. So that's what I'm...
Okay. I understand that part. There will be more to it, though, because unfortunately, we have to create efficiencies and improvements for our officers to be able to operate as a full officer. Because I think also what's going on in part, and I don't think that the Chief of Patrol would disagree and others, that they end up operating at less than full capacity because of all the things that they might have to do that are not doing the job out on the street. Like, they might have to spend extra time at evidence control because of staffing there. They might have to write reports a certain way because of a technology issue. We need to make the improvements so that our officers can operate as 100% of an officer and not as a 70% of an officer. And I think that's what really changes the game here. So it's both. And that's why you're going to always see a professionalization slash with the civilianization, because it's more than just one-for-one. We're talking about long-lasting, permanent improvements to the Police Department. One-for-one doesn't get you there, because one-for-one gets you patrol officers on the street, and then someday in the future, they come back because there's a need inside. We're going to get rid of that, and that's going to be the savings. And it gets tricky mathematically if you're talking about only keeping this as a savings program, but it's going to do much, much more than that. It's going to improve so many facets of the operation that they're innumerable to discuss here in any short brevity, we could say.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Chief Odell. Deputy Commissioner, that concludes the presentation.
Yes, sir, it does.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to go to the slide where it talks about patrol strength, and it talks about the number of patrol officers on light duty and the number of patrol officers detailed out. I'm going to start with the detail out first. The 56 officers that are detailed out, where are they detailed to?
Council President, so those officers are detailed to various positions outside of the Patrol Division. And what that means is, that's pending the actual transfer itself. So instead of us holding that officer in the patrol and counting that number, we detail it during a detailed basis, and then when the order catches them, then they're removed out of our Patrol Division into another division, whether it be CIB, SSP, Strategic Service Bureau, or what have you. So the detailed out is strictly how we account for where the... Every single officer is in the Patrol Division.
Okay. The 88 officers that's on light duty, the light duty, is it job-related or, I mean, what is considered light duty and what caused them to get on light duty? Was it job-related in any way?
Good evening, Council President, and thank you for the opportunity to address the council. So when we talk about light duty, unfortunately, I didn't break it down by patrol and other districts.
Sir, make you... Sorry for interrupting. Please make sure you speak clearly into the mic, just so folks at home can hear.
Yes, sir.
I wasn't asking you to break it down in patrol. I was just wondering why they're on light duty, and was it because of being a job-related injury?
So Council President, in reference to the members on light duty, currently in the Police Department right now, we have 80% or 87 members who are on light duty due to a line-of-duty injury, meaning it happened while they were at work, and we have another 45 members who were injured outside of work, which is considered non-line-of-duty.
Okay. So how long can they stay on light duty? And if they hurt themselves outside of the work, how long can they stay in an inactive status, you know? Because when you're on light duty, it tells me that you can't really do anything but desk jobs or those kind of things when we need them on the street. So how long... What's the average length of time that an officer can be on light duty before they are told you either come back or you either look for some... Another profession?
So per the current MOU with the FOP, each member, whether it be line-of-duty or non-line-of-duty, they have one year from the time they are first seen at the Public Safety Infirmary at Mercy Hospital, sir. So it's one year.
Okay. So with these 88 officers, what's the length of time they've been out?
So I do not have the exact number or it broken down at this time.
Well, if you can get it back to the committee, I would appreciate it. And the other question that I have referred to, I think it was the first page, the page where it talks about personnel data. I think I heard something about non-hires, sworn hires? I think you spoke to that, the non-hires. Can you come to the mic?
Microphone, Ms. Williams, please. And thank you.
When you talked about the non-hires or sworn, were they police officers?
They are police officer trainees.
Police officer trainees?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I know that we have a... I think, I don't know who mentioned it, but there was a problem with getting, you know, officers hired in a timely manner. I thought that you all had cut out some steps so that we can get officers hired a little more quicker, and then we hired a firm through the Board of Estimates that's supposed to do the background checks. So how is that working? Can somebody speak to that? Because it seems to me that if, you know, we can hire these officers a lot quicker, you know, and get their background checks done a lot sooner, that would be convenient for the Police Department. Because the reason why we did this contract is because they said that this firm would be able to get this thing turned around quickly.
Yes, sir.
Ma'am, microphone, please.
Lieutenant Colonel Barilaro.
Ma'am, microphone, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Lieutenant Colonel Barilaro, for right now, when we say we hire, people are using different language. Some people say, how many have we hired in a month? And how... Some people say, I look at it like, how many do we have hired for the next class? So currently, we've hired 20 people for the next class for November, and we have 13 more to be hired by the end of September. So we actually have 33 hired for the next class. Does that make sense? You're...
It makes sense, but how long does it take through the HR process to get them hired, is my question.
From the time they fill out an application until they get hired by our HR. Probably takes about, I would say, we're trying to get it down to 60 days currently. We're at about 90 right now, and that's due to backgrounds and people getting the paperwork in. Just because they fill out an application and their information goes in the computer, we can talk to that applicant numerous times to submit their paperwork, but if they fail to do so, then they get put to the side, and then we follow up with them.
Well, can you talk about the background investigation that's done by, I can't think of the name of the firm?
Kent Tech.
Yeah. What is the length of time for them to actually do a background check?
It's been ranging between 30 days and 45 days. It just depends on how soon the person gets their information in.
So is it working better for you all with this outside entity as opposed to when we were doing it in-house?
I think now that we have a larger volume of applications and people in the process, it will be more beneficial for us. Before, I don't know that it was cost-effective, but now that we have so many people, we have 172 people in background, it's helpful for them to take over the investigations and continue it.
Okay. Thank you. This is my last question, Mr. Chair. This is to Deputy Commissioner Bonaparte. He stated that the surrounding jurisdictions are offering our officers more. I'd like to know what that more is, because if my memory serves me right, we have one of the best packages around as it relates to policing. We have a lucrative package, you know, they have the drop. So what is the other agencies offering our officers to get them away from here, other than they can sit in a car and catch people speeding up Pulaski Highway and those kind of things? Why our officers actually do real work? So is it because they want to do less work?
Sure, sir. I think a large part of it is attributed to just quality of life. We've been talking amongst ourselves internally, and we recognize that most of the people that have been leaving, particularly within the last... Within the month of August, have been between one and five years. Colonel Garry actually went out and spoke to some of the young officers, and that was one of the main things. I mean, they can... It's not necessarily that it's a real large increase in salary and things like that. You know, people are different. I had a conversation with a retired deputy commissioner before, and I remember like when I came on his job and we would sit, it's like you couldn't even wait, like, to get back to work, and that if you left and went home, you felt like you were missing something. Colonel Stanfield, everybody, we can recognize that. Younger officers, they're not in that same mode like that. They want to know when it's time. They'll work for you, don't get me wrong, but they want to know when they're getting off. And if you impact those, their lives in that way, that dramatically or that adversely, then we think that it leads to separation in other agencies that don't have quite a problem that we do. So again, this has, you know, we have to be smarter. We know that the Commissioner and I, we were just talking, and I know the mayor has made a comment about this, about how can we incentivize, you know, hiring, and particularly in patrol. So we're trying to wrap our mind around that and come up with creative ideas that will be able to have a sustain. But other agencies, they have things such as, they even have signing bonuses and things of that nature. Listen, they know if you come to Baltimore City and you get a police officer between one, particularly towards the five-year mark, or even if they got a greater, they have a real seasoned police officer. And if you're looking at some of these agencies like Anaruno County and Baltimore County on the fringe of their areas, on the outline of their jurisdictional lines and some of the issues that they're having there, what better officer would you like to have patrolling that than a Baltimore police officer? So they're... And they're smart about what they're doing. They're reaching out to two of our most... Two of our districts that were severely impacted by this was the Western and Eastern District, who has the best police officers. We're all good, but we know that those are traditionally our most, you know, violent districts, but also that they have really good police officers there, which has also the lowest amount of medical in the agency. It comes from the Eastern and Western District. So you have really go-getters there, and the whole agency as a whole does well. I'm not... Certainly not undermining or, you know, taking shots at anyone else, but the reality is, is that you're going to get a really good police officer once you get on the streets of Baltimore, and you learn police work the way it's supposed to be done.
Yeah. I asked that question because, like it or not, this is for citizens who... Some who don't respect the Police Department. We have the most challenging city right now anywhere in this metropolitan area. Most of the officers in the surrounding counties don't have to deal with what we deal with here in Baltimore City. That's why I was asking, what was it? Because I know they don't have what our officers have to face here.
Yes, sir.
Because, you know, when I ride up Pulaski Highway, they just stop in people in cars.
Right.
And we have to deal with shootings, murders, and carjacking, opioid overdose, those kind of things. So I was wondering, was it because they want less work or because it's really challenging? So I was glad to see that we're offering our police officers some of the mental health issues that, you know, because they face the same type of issues that we all face.
Sure.
You know, being in a stressful job. So I was just wondering, what it was they offered them, you know? Is it because it looks good out there because of all they have to do? And I'm not downplaying some of the work that the officers in the county do, but what I see is car stops.
Yes. Yeah, that's it. It's, you know, in many regards, and, you know, not an indictment on our brothers and sisters and other agencies, but we recognize that the work in Baltimore is different, and the amount of experience that you get rapidly in Baltimore is unparalleled in this state. So we have great working relationships with many of those agencies and, you know, joint initiatives and efforts that we do. So they're really getting, you know, they're picking off some of our good officers, and we just have to be smarter about it and figure out a way how we can keep police officers here in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. First question I have is, I want to touch on the auxiliary police. This is something that I... The auxiliary police, this is something that I've discussed at length with Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Batts, Commissioner Davis, Commissioner D'Souza, and most recently interim Commissioner Tuggle. I noticed that we have 11 officers listed, and I think, I thought we were at eight before, so I'm assuming we got a couple new men and women that are helping out.
That's correct, Mr. Chair, yes.
Do we have... Do we have any data on how much those auxiliary police officers have worked in the last month or the last two pay periods?
Zero. So they've been offline since I've received them a few months back, just because we saw some things in the policy that were way outdated. Some of the infrastructure was, quite frankly, was just... It was a little bit of disarray. So we just took them offline, even down... Little things down to the uniform, they look way too much like police officers. We've actually revamped the uniforms. They're different uniforms now. Process of getting those, as you could probably imagine, that by itself takes about five months to get those uniforms in. So there's a lot of things that are happening, different new policies, revamping of the whole program, and they have to go back through the academy now because we want to use them a little bit differently. We want them to be a lot more visible in our community, not so much riding around cars, but we want them integrated in our communities, perhaps maybe pairing up with not just maybe our NCOs and not just with our chaplains, but with the community itself. So we know a lot of communities are out there in their communities, so we would like to put them in our communities with the community members that are already being engaged in their communities. So it's a lot of revamping that's going on, but we're getting real close. It was a lot more entailed than I thought. I thought this would be a quick revamp, so I do apologize for that, because I remember the last time I told you when we were going to get started. But there was a lot more things that need to be done than I thought, but I think we're still on a good pace, and we're getting real close, sir.
When are we going to have them out on the street? Do we have a date?
Yeah, that's what got me in trouble last time, the date. So I'll talk about that again. So one of the things, we want to be really fiscal responsible, right? So in order to train them, it takes education and training personnel. We have an upcoming chaplaincy training, and it's almost a mirror image training. However, the auxiliary police officers get a little bit more extended training. And so the next chaplaincy training orientation, first of all, the orientation is coming up two days. That's October the 2nd and October the 9th. Those are two orientation days. We're going to pull all of the candidates for auxiliaries in there also, because they're going to go into the same training, but after the first eight weeks, the chaplains are really done their training. The auxiliaries have to go and extend it four weeks. So if you take the October 2nd, October 9th date, let's say October 9th, that's the last day of orientation. So if you take the October second, October ninth date, let's say October ninth, that's the last day of orientation. The training has always started no more than two weeks later than that, the academy class started. And that way, we're not paying the um, overtime for the education and training personnel to train two different groups, cause they got to train them the same way anyway. So now it's just one fee we're paying overtime. We just want to be fiscal responsible in this.
So the answer is the second week of January?
No, no, it won't be that long, no, 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 no.
You told me.
No, that's, when they start will be sometime, they'll get orientation, it's two days optional orientations, they have to attend one of them. That's the chaplains and the explo, I'm going to say explorers, the auxiliaries, second and the ninth, that's the only two dates.
Okay.
Two weeks later at the le, at the latest, the academy then starts and it's a once-a-week training up at the education and training.
But they will not be deployed on the street until the second week of January?
So if you count twelve weeks out, whatever that twelve weeks are, and then remember prayerfully the uniforms are back in, cause they can't go on the streets without the uniforms.
How long ago did we order the uniforms?
They, they were recently actually just ordered, uniforms just got revamped.
How, how recently?
Like last week.
How, how can we, five months to order uniforms is not acceptable. How can we speed that up?
Uh, I really don't have an answer for that. We're using our vendor that we use and we've been told by our quartermaster, it takes five months to order those uniforms.
Are we using a vendor that's not capable of meeting the police department's needs?
It's the same vendor that we've been using since, I don't even know the name of the vendor now, since we've gone from Howard Uniform to this new vendor, but it's the same one that outfits all of us.
Is that how long it takes to get, I, I mean.
No, so.
With all due respect, this, this is not an acceptable response to the situation. We have a number of uh, current auxiliary officers that want to get back out on the street, that want to contribute, that want to help make our city safe. And, you know, we're being told now that we don't have uniforms. And I'm not trying to jump on you about that, I understand if it's a procurement issue or it's a vendor issue. What I want to get to the heart of is how do we speed that up?
The only thing I can maybe suggest is, because I don't know any way to speed up to getting the uniforms in. However, we could certainly send them out.
Director of Fiscal Department, since it is a concern of the council.
Microphone.
Uh, since it is a concern of the council as far as the uniforms, uh, when I get back in tomorrow, I can see how soon I can push the order through and work with Colonel to do so.
Excellent, I, and Colonel Russell, I appreciate everything that you're doing on this front. Ms. Williams, if you could remind that vendor how much money the city pays them every single year to do business with them, I think uh, maybe they'll appreciate um, the sense of urgency here. Uh, the other piece to that question, Chief Russell, is what can the council do to help you recruit additional people uh, to get in uh, the auxiliary police?
So there's, I thank you for that, Council, um, Chairman. Um, so one of the things we're looking at is not looking at we're going to do is our IT says it's probably best, we're going to put online um, applications. And they're letting us know it's a lot, it does a lot better if we put it on the HR, city's HR um, site and not B P D site. And there's some reasons I don't want to go into now, but we can talk, discuss that offline and I think that's perfectly fine. The city website, they can apply on there. Um, so if you can maybe help us with that, pushing that along, um, getting that on site, online, that would be great.
Absolutely. Um, Bob or Karen, can you speak to that? Cause we're twenty-two days out from that first class, so we can't reasonably expect uh, a potential recruit to the auxiliary police to want to sign up, you know, a week in advance if we don't have that, that posting online. So can we, can you guys get with D H R tomorrow? And, and let's try and get the um, the, the posting online by no later than call a business this Friday? Um, just so we can get moving and I know that my colleagues are very eager to help you in, in that recruitment and we all have um, identified folks in our districts that want to, want to help out and serve.
Well, well, Mr. Chair, since you're being so generous, if I may, um, the other piece would be the marketing piece, right? So B P D is about to start marketing, so we could push it out. Um, but I know we, even though we have a good following with B P D TV, I know that the city has a lot, much larger one, right? So, I mean, that's another venue that you can help us with. I'd appreciate it, the more people we can reach out to the city. We're pushing out by word of mouth through our chaplains, through faith-based, through communities. But the more people we can put eyes on, the more applications we can get in, the more people we can get on the street.
Yeah, I think you'll, you'll find full support from the council um, for that, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate your work on that. Um, I have one other question, I have a number of questions, but I'm going to follow the two-question rule here. Um, my, my other question is, um, I, I know there was a discussion of the number of lieutenants and I think it was thirty-eight lieutenants, but you said that only twenty-seven of them are currently on the street. Can you expand on that a little bit and just explain what that means, what those ele, uh, other eleven lieutenants are up to?
Yes, sir. So we have thirty-four that are, actually we have more lieutenants in patrol than we actually are authorized for. We have thirty-four that are authorized and thirty-eight that are assigned, twenty-seven are full duty. Of those twenty-seven full do, of the thirty, twenty-seven out of the thirty-eight, we have, uh, let's see here, we have two on light duty, two on medical, one detailed out of full duty. Uh, that doesn't take into account also for, there's actually one, actually six more that are, if I'm reading this correctly, I apologize. That one is actually on medical, there's another three that are suspended, there's one that's detailed out full duty and this is incorporating into the DAT schedule as well.
Got it, and this is out of the thirty-eight, so that's how the thirty-eight comes down to the twenty-seven.
Yes, sir, yes, that's, that was my mistake.
Understood, that's helpful. Uh, Councilman Pinkett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, if, before I ask my two questions, if I could just get some clarification on the um, spreadsheet. The um, on the current spreadsheet that we received um, for July, it says a total of twenty-nine separations. But when I um, look back on the spreadsheet that we received on August the thirteenth um, for separations, it says twenty-two. Um, is there any reason and should we expect for the numbers to change next, Karen?
Now we are reporting twenty-nine because that was more accurate information. And I think basically because this time we asked for um, a later date for the reporting.
Okay.
So we could get the uh, the end of the month uh, correct numbers. So that was one of the reasons we asked.
Okay, I just want to, want to make sure. Um, so if, I want to get to my question. So with the um, the number or net change where we have, um, I guess it's, like you said, the twenty-nine separation, do, do we know why the officers left? And um, I guess it would be too soon to know whether they are going to other agencies?
Hi, I'm the Director of H R. Um, eleven of the officers retired, three were terminated for cause, and then of the others, they resigned. Eighty percent of those did leave to go to other agencies, but as.
What percent?
About eighty percent did leave for other agencies, but as uh, the deputy had said earlier, a lot of it is about work, about life balance.
So that would be ten of the fifteen, if eighty percent is your number.
And uh, what, what was the, I guess, years of service? Do we know what the years of service were? Cause I, I, I notice.
Yeah, I don't have the detail on that, but, but as the deputy had said, they usually were within about one to five years of service.
Um, and part of the reason I'm asking, I mean, clearly that, finding out with that timeframe, to me, is critical if we're going to think of any types of incentives to keep people. If we don't know, you know, when they're leaving, we, we, we got to figure out, okay, at, at what point does an officer decide, I've got enough training and what point does the surrounding jurisdictions, you know, understand that this officer is ready to pick from, from the city? Um, and so we've got to balance an incentive with um, um, also with a, a potential penalty for leaving early. What, you know, what, because, you know, I can give you a sign-in bonus if I know what your penalty is for departing from, from the agency is. And so, you know, the surrounding agency, and I know that's probably sound like a, a broken record, you know, the, the reason they can do it is because now they don't have to, you know, put the money into their academies, because they're getting an officer that's our, that we, that we are the ones who are investing in. So, I mean, we, we've got to figure out what that year is, what, what, when, when an officer's leaving, what the incentive needs to be at that point that makes an officer think twice about leaving us um, and, and instead sticking, sticking out. So if we can have a little bit more clarity on that, um, come next month, I, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, we can work on that, sure.
Um, and, and then my, my last question is related to, there's a lot of discussion about the, the scheduling and the four-ten. I'm, I'm assuming that when it was established, it was established based upon what the projections are, what we felt like was needed in, in patrol. Are we saying that we didn't have enough staff at that point when we thought about the four-ten? Or are we saying that we thought we would have enough? What, I mean, what, what, what is happening that now we're in a position where, you know, this scheduling, which I'm, I'm hoping was based upon some, some data, is now, you know, doesn't fit?
Great question, sir. I, I, you know, I, since I've been back, I haven't been able to definitively find out um, how and why that schedule went into play. It appears to be clearly from the onset that the agency um, did not have the amount of people to adequately and sufficiently staff um, that schedule from inception. I think that it has been chasing that number um, through various administrations since its inception to today. So one of the things that we did uh, was to really take a real hard look at it and to see whether or not um, you know, it was the schedule that we should keep in play. Um, there has been, you know, numerous discussions, as we all know, in terms of the financial impact that it's, that's bearing on the city. You know, I look at it from a different lens a little bit. I look at it really uh, in terms of some of the things that we talked about here today. And the most important thing to me is really the officer's health and wellness and more, uh, even more importantly, is the safety of the officer. So now we're looking at ten-hour days, we're asking some of those officers to stay over an additional four hours and we know that there's an hour ramp-up time prior to them coming to work and a, a hour after they come to work. So now, instead of it being fourteen hours a day, it's now sixteen hours a day. There's only twenty-four hours a day in a, in a work week. And then many of those officers, like the ones we talked about in terms of being drafted, sometimes have to come back the next day and work another ten. It doesn't work. We know it doesn't work. Um, we are working very hard, as I've mentioned earlier, to turn that around and we're hoping that the union will agree with us in this. Um, we have been working collectively um, to try to change this, it's just that important to us. I know it's very important to the mayor as well. I mean, she, you know, she's been beating the podium in the desk about that as well as the commissioner as well, so.
So if I can dovetail on, on the question I ask is, is there a, with our current staffing, is there a schedule that we believe works under the current, our, our current numbers?
Without going into great detail about it, sir, we think that uh, it is a much improved and it will, it will address all those concerns that we just talked about exponentially.
Because it, you know, it, you would think that the schedule was created to benefit the officers. But whenever I look at these numbers and look at the numbers of attrition, then it, to me, is saying that overall the officers are, are collectively saying that this schedule doesn't work because they, they, they're showing by leaving the, the force. Especially when, it'd be different if it was, if you were saying twenty percent left to go to another agency. You know, then maybe you go, okay, well, maybe just somebody just, but when you got numbers that are around eighty percent of the officers are not leaving law enforcement, then they, they, there's something, they're saying, you know, no matter who is saying that the schedule works, because I guess somebody is advocating for it, the officers in, in the department are saying that you're killing us and we're getting out of here.
Yes, sir, in our line of work, that's called a clue.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Scott?
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair and, and Councilman. Just because I was around here, I can tell you what happened. Uh, the former police commissioner lied to the council and everyone else and said that we had the numbers that was necessary when he decided to, to make this deal, even though he knew we didn't. I know that Mr. Sinema can't say it, but he would agree. People were misled into what we actually had and now we're left to foot the bill, so to speak. Uh, before I get into my, my questions, I want to make a couple of comments and a couple of requests. First, Deputy Commissioner, but this is really for Ms. Stokes and the folks with the, in the mayor's office. Uh, the staffing study, during the budget, uh, we asked about the staffing study and the city solicitor said to us that there was under review and we should be able to receive it within the week. Well, Labor Day has come and gone and the council still doesn't have it. So for us, uh, we're going to request that, that the staffing study draft be sent to the council uh, committee, both committees, public safety and, and judiciary, and this is budget, uh, the budget committee, uh, by the end of this week, please. And uh, second, second to that, uh, when we're talking about the civ, civ, uh, going to more civilians, of course, uh, Mr. Sinema, I appreciate, appreciate you and your leadership on that issue, but still the question for us still hasn't gone answered. So the initial question was, what happened to the civ, making more civilians in the police department? Why was this uh, project delayed almost two years? No one has answered that question tonight.
So I, I think, I can try to speak to that. I think um, from, from where I sit, um, there was a general belief that frankly, we disagreed with, that was that there was a need for additional positions and not this offset. And so, you know, there's a period of time where I think they were going to, oh, we need to create X number of positions and I think that caused some confusion, cause they think they needed more dollars to do it. I think since then, we've worked with the department to say, hey, you can do this in a budget-neutral way. You can take positions that exist today and have a sworn person, you know, sitting at a desk doing work or doing work that a civilian can do. You can put them back into a more traditional role for a sworn officer and then hire somebody for, to do that civilian work. So that's from where I sit, I think that was the holdup. We didn't have more funding for, just to add new positions, um, for just civilians. We wanted to do it in a cost-neutral way. And I think we're get, as, you know, we've discussed, we're getting closer in there, we're getting closer. There's some, uh, we still need to do our review and make sure that we commit to something that we think will, will be done in a, in a cost-effective way.
Thank you, uh, thank you for that, Mr. Sinema, and thank you for your leadership on, on that issue. And just to, while I'm on, on that, I just want to also point out, uh, for Mr. Deputy Commissioner, while you know we appreciate your service and your leadership in the department, uh, the council uh, does not believe that these one hundred positions that was given to the police department should have been given to them, especially since Mr. Sinema has all but admitted to us that we know that we're going to just use that money to office, offset overtime. And basically by looking at the sheet here, without those one hundred positions, instead of having two hundred and twenty-eight vacancies, we would just have a hundred and twenty-eight and seeing as though we are nowhere near uh, a point where we're going to be hiring more officers that we would leave, should, that are leaving the department. I think that we have to do a better job of uh, budgeting our money next year. My first question is about uh, patrol, patrol strength and staffing. So you, I think everyone in here knows that, that as long as I've been on this council, I've been saying that the way that we allocate our patrols are offset. We all know that, we, everyone in this room knows we need to redistrict our boundary lines. But just a question uh, that I think I know the answer to. When we allocate uh, patrol resources, what do we consider? Do we consider the populations of each district? Do we consider the calls for service of each district? Do we consider the square mileage of each district? How do we develop the, the staffing numbers? Or are we still using the basic post and, and, and constant numbers that we have used at least since I've been alive?
Sir, I'll answer that question by saying, it's, it's, a, a proper um, assessment of how our post is created is all those things that you mentioned. Um, we have, um, you know, during our negotiations with the F O P and taking a hard look at other things, we've also discovered that the actual post boundaries within the districts has not been properly evaluated for about ten years, I believe it was the number that we found. Um, and it appears that there have been just um, kind of, I'm not sure as to what the thought process was. Um, that's something that we recognize, we're working with the mayor's office currently um, and they are actually doing a real critical analysis of that and helping us to re-establish what those posts will look like, based on calls for service, based on density, population, um, all those um, variables that come into play that is needed to, in order to get a quality assessment so that we can build a proper post construction for each one of the nine districts.
Thank you, um, uh, Mr. Deputy Commissioner. It would have been nice if the mayor's office wouldn't have killed police for district in Billings, Annapolis and we could have been moving forward that process already. But also, what I would like to request for. But also, what I would like to request for you guys, for you and, and the Colonel, because I've, myself and Councilman Henry took the liberty of, of doing it ourselves, to show the next time when you come with a patrol strength, to actually add in how many people, how many people each officer that is, that is going out on this, on that shift for each district? Or if you want to do in general, the amount where they would be responsible. So, for, for example, let's just say, even though we know this would never happen, let's just say all ninety-five of the active-duty patrol officers in, in the northeast district were on, on the street today, they would, right now, they will be responsible for one thousand and three hundred and eighty-five people, a person, a officer. In comparison, great example, the, let's just say, the southeastern district, of all seventy-three of them were out on the street today, they would be responsible for, for eight hundred and ninety-four citizens per officer. So, when you see that and we know that and we've known that for quite some time, I think that it's time for us to look at a complete overall of how we do it because we cannot continue to operate our police department on nineteen-eighties or nineties data if we want to move forward in the twentieth century. So, if we could actually add that into, into the slide, I think that would be beneficial to everyone on the council. And my last question is, for the police cadets, can someone tell me how many of them are actual city residents? And how many of them were former police explorers? As when we asked you guys to restart that program, we specifically asked to try to tie it with children who were growing out of the explorer program.
Yes, sir. So, we currently have nine cadets employed by the police department. I believe only two of them are actually city residents and only one was a previous police explorer. We are trying to incorporate, working with Colonel Russell's office, the academy, to have a smooth transition from them being explorers to cadets. They have to reach the age of eighteen first. Once they get eighteen, then we groom them and have them go to various different units throughout the police department. So, when they come to the academy, these are our future squad leaders and class commanders and hopefully, our future leaders in the police department. So, that's where we are as of today.
So, exactly like the captain was said, Mr. Chair, that, so that, that's the reason for the in-school curriculum for the explorers. First of all, understand that all of them are city residents. So, all the kids that we're working with are going to our public schools right here in Baltimore City. We should have a large contingency of them graduating this year. We're still recruiting right now. But we expect, let me not throw a number out, but we expect a good number out this year. And then, as they come out of high school, they'll get thrown, not thrown, but they'll apply for the cadet program. So, we should have a larger number this year. It's taken a while to groom them. Again, we, that's something, remember, we inherited and it was kind of a, anyway. So, I think you'll see real good numbers coming out of this year.
Thank you, Colonel. And also, I would like to add is that we have received complaints from some former explorers about them being rejected. So, we've had some former police explorers be rejected for being a cadet. And for example, I know two of them personally who then just applied for the military, which they've been accepted. So, if we're going to make this about home-growing, young people who have self-said, listen, I want to make my city that I grow up safer, we have to be cognizant of that as we move forward.
Actually, I would just echo your sentiments. A couple of them I personally mentored. And I thought for sure they'd become police trainees. At the time, we didn't have the cadet program in and they were, for whatever reason, rejected. But I do know we have Major Hans in place now and we have some really good administration or leadership in there. I don't foresee that problem happening again.
Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can we talk about light duty a little bit more? The sheet up on the screen there, right now, says that there are eighty-seven light duty. I guess that, that injury or whatever it is occurred in the line of duty and forty-five occurred outside of the line of duty. Am I correct on that?
That's correct.
And that is throughout the entire department?
That is correct.
How many of them are in the light duty unit? And what is that?
So, the light duty unit is actually members who have been deemed permanently disabled by Mercy, the Public Safety Infirmary. That is different than a light duty unit, sir. So, we call that, they're assigned to locator four oh eight. That's their payroll locator. And what happens, that is a separate group of people. They are on light duty, but they have been determined to be permanently disabled and never able to return to police work. So, that happens a year after they're first seen by PSI, and I have those numbers too. So, ninety-three of the people assigned to locator four oh eight had injuries that occurred in the line of duty. Twenty more had injuries that were non-line of duty. So, they were injured, they were seen at the Public Safety Infirmary, and a year after that initial consultation, they've been determined that they can never come back. There's currently a hundred and thirteen of those officers in locator four oh eight. Now, once they're put into locator four oh eight, they're given what's called a ninety-day letter, sir. The ninety-day letter says they have to apply for pension benefits through the F and P pension system. If they don't, they can be separated from the agency. Now, there's a waiting period. So, once somebody signs their ninety-day letter, they submit their records to the F and P, their medical records, and they request for the line of duty pension or non-line of duty pension. A hearing is scheduled. Those hearings are scheduled by the F and P pension system, not the police department. And, and I hope that explains it a little more clearly.
Are you getting a different locator report than I am? Because I've been requesting locator reports recently. I have one from June, I have two from August. Sorry, I have one from July and two from August. And my August first locator report says that there are, sorry, August, um, sorry, I'm looking at July here. Whatever, you know, July says we've got seventy-nine, not a hundred and forty or whatever you said.
So, in July, sir, there were seventy-nine?
That's what mine says. Yeah, seventy-nine.
And that's, that's locator four oh eight, sir?
Locator four oh eight, yeah. As of, let me, let me get this one more time here. Locator four oh eight for August thirteenth. Said that there were seventy-five in locator four oh eight.
Seventy-five.
So, there, that's a pretty significant discrepancy between what you're telling me and what I'm seeing here. What I also know is that during the same period, or actually, there's another report that I got dated August twenty-seventh, is that there were sixty-three on light duty in patrol, actually. There currently, for this, like, right now, there are sixty-three on light duty in patrol. So, even if I put them together and said seventy-three in light duty unit and sixty-three on light duty in patrol, that accounts for everybody that the department has on light duty, basically, right? I mean, that gets us to about a hundred and forty on light duty throughout the entire department. And, and I'm, I'm getting a, a look here about that number. The, the light duty in patrol is based on my review directly of the rosters, of the shift schedules. That just, these were, these were printed three days ago, four days ago. So, that's a direct one-to-one accounting. I went through every single name and looked at that.
So, as of September fifth, there's seventy duty, seventy-two light-duty personnel in Patrol Division. Seven-duty officers.
Okay.
Seventy-two officers.
Okay. So, that's a little higher than even what I had.
Yes.
I, I was just counting more or less ones that are going to be out on light duty the entire month. Maybe not one who, ones who are out on light duty for three or four days.
And just so you're aware, sir, what we do is this. The patrol commanders will have their shift commanders put light duty. They'll, they won't put just one or two days. They'll extend it out because it's impossible for them to manage their books if they just keep putting one or two days and they'll always go out short.
So, my concern is that through accounting for everybody that's on patrol on light duty and everybody that's in the light duty unit, whatever it is they actually do, that doesn't sound like an actual job description to me, that accounts for everybody that's on light duty within the department. How many of our admin personnel? Because we also have, of the individuals who are assigned to districts, we have a hundred and twenty-seven admin personnel assigned to districts. How many of those admin personnel are on light duty? And why, why would we not have the admin personnel, you know, assigned, have people on light duty instead assigned to admin work rather than taking up space on our patrol shift schedule?
So, Councilman, what we have in our Patrol Division for admin is three officers per district, which would be three full-duty officers that work admin, which would be twenty-seven.
That's not what the locator report says.
That's four oh eight. We don't, our locators are-
Oh, no. I'm talking about the locator report. I'm talking about the, the locator codes associated with admin in the central district, admin in the eastern district, admin in the northeastern district.
So, if I may clarify, Councilman, locator four oh eight is a different entity than a line-
I know what that is. I'm talking about, okay, for example, bear with me, colleagues, if you will. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Can we, Councilman, or, I just want to let this gentleman, do you, did you have anything to add to that response? Or, because I know you, Councilman, we've talked, I know you know what four oh eight is. Can you just finish what you were saying real quickly?
Yes, sir. So, the locator four oh eight does not, is not a direct correlation with the light-duty people in the district. Light-duty people in the district may not have been determined to be permanently disabled. They may be waiting for that year to expire before PSI actually says they're permanently disabled. So, there's actually two different categories of light duty, if you will. There's those that have been deemed permanently disabled by Mercy and those who are either waiting to recover or waiting for that one-year time limit that is required by the MOU to be permanently disabled by Mercy, to be deemed permanently disabled.
Got it. And Chief Odell, you had something?
Yeah. And just to be clear, so we're all singing from the same sheet of music, four oh eight won't be a unit. Like other locators might actually be an operation. Four oh eight is a designation and those people are spread throughout the department. Some of them are in police district admin units, some are in evidence control, some are in R M S. So, they're all over the place. They're not centrally localized and they're not managed centrally, other than through the medical process.
That, I believe, one hundred percent. But that is not what your internal tracking process would indicate to any intelligent person. The, the locator process here breaks out the stations, the assignment of every single officer throughout the department. For example, locator ninety is administrative detail in duty in the northeastern district. Ninety-one is the northeastern district action team. Ninety-three is shift A in the northeastern district. Ninety-four is shift B C swing in the northeastern district, and so on. These are all locator codes, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, and they correlate to an individual having an assignment within the department. Four oh eight is classified in the exact same way. The department is not accounting for the whereabouts of those individuals in terms of their actual placement within the department. So, there's a breakdown in the internal process that the department has in how it accounts for the whereabouts of officers. I think that further evidence of that is that when I, when I combine locators thirty, which is admin in the southeastern district, sixty, which is admin in the eastern district, and I won't enumerate all of these labels, but thirty, sixty, ninety, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and ninety, a hundred and sixty, and two hu, two hundred and sixty and two hundred and twenty, and one, these are all admin positions within the districts. And when I total them up, I see that there are a hundred and twenty-seven officers assigned in the, in that fashion.
So, the, the admin, so I apologize for cutting you off. We're getting lost on the admin. We have to assign somebody in the admin function in the district if their schedule is a five-day work week. They can't be patrolled because patrol works four, three, they work a four on, three off. So, the admin is not theoretically an admin. And what you're seeing is the neighborhood community officers, foot officers, will actually be designated in an administrative locator number, strictly based off of their work in five days on, two days off. So, there's different work schedules in the Patrol Division under different locator numbers.
So, you're telling me that you have people within each district doing things like patrol that are not assigned to patrol while our patrol numbers are actually down in the, I mean, you're telling me that you have people doing foot patrol?
No, they, they, they are in foot patrol, absolutely. Yes.
They are in foot patrol, but they're actually stationed in admin.
That's, that's, you're saying stationed in admin. Yes, they are-
Assigned to admin.
Absolutely.
They're assigned to admin. So, they're doing patrol work, but they're assigned to admin.
We, we get, we're getting-
When we don't have enough people in patrol.
We're getting lost on the-
And that four, and it's the people specifically in the four-on-three-off schedule that are driving our overtime.
Councilman, can I, or, BPD, before you respond, Deputy Commissioner, why don't you handle this one? Can you explain the, the contract piece of this and how they have to be, they, they can't, because of the contract, the limitations and, and, I, I, because I think that'll answer your question, Councilman.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So, the, when, when, obviously, when someone is in patrol, the contract specifies that when they are in a sector patrol, that they have to work on the ten-hour shift. All other ancillary units, which do patrol functions, but not necessarily have to work in the four-ten, they're working such as, for example, on foot deployments, the neighborhood, the NCOs. They're working in the five-day, eight-hour block windows and so forth. Those, because of the way the locator numbers are and all of the codes that are associated with that, they either have to be in one of those or in another. So, it all kind of depends, I think we're kind of getting caught up. I think we're kind of getting caught up here in terms of, how do I categorize this? Those officers that Colonel Garrity is speaking out about, whether they're NCOs, whether they're foot, whether they are on bike, but they are not in a patrol car, they are working different hours. And because of the way the contract is specified, we can't lump them into that category because they are not in that patrol function. However, their duties and responsibilities, their day-to-day job assignment of what they do is a patrol function in terms of what they're doing and the service that they're providing for the citizens of Baltimore. So, did that clarify it or give you some level?
I'll defer to the Councilman.
I, I hear what you're saying. But you say ancillary, and what I hear is people who are not assigned to patrol in the assignment that is driving overtime, and it's a budget hearing, right? It says that you're, you have people that you're not putting in patrol and our overtime is up because there aren't enough people on patrol, like what's in the FOP schedule, the four-ten schedule. You have people, you say, let's make them do patrol, but let's keep them outside of the patrol schedule so that our numbers in the patrol schedule are artificially low so that we keep needing to draw on overtime in order to have more and more people in there. This, this group of people that are doing patrol but not in patrol accounts for twenty-two percent of the people assigned to districts. That's a lot of bodies.
Well, sir, I would say that there are certainly other types of deployments and things that, that we have, we feel to be necessary in our efforts to combat crime in the city. There are certain functions that need to be performed. We look at them as being essential. And in addition to that, I would also say that despite that, we are, although there's always room for improvement, we do understand that, but we are also, our overtime, as well as our drafting numbers, are coming down. So, we are working towards that, but we understand that there are other functions that must occur within, in some specific district- that must occur within, in some specific district, some other than others, depending on the geography, depending on the call volume, depending on the crime that we're seeing. All those things come into play, that we need some sort of flexibility with those particular officers outside of handling day-to-day calls for service in the agency.
Just to come back to my earliest point one more time, because I don't think this is really manifest anything in particular. It would appear to me that every single officer in the department who is on light duty and is not coded four oh eight is in patrol. Why is the department managing its personnel in such a fashion that it's keeping every single light-duty officer, all of these officers on patrol, instead of putting them somewhere else and putting more able-bodied officers back into patrol?
From a light-duty standpoint, sir?
There are, within the officers assigned to patrol in the districts, there are seventy-plus officers on light duty. If there are a hundred, like, what, why are we not putting those light-duty officers back into positions that are less strenuous and putting other able-bodies? Or are the other people not able-bodied and not, and, and not coded as light-duty?
Well, no, that's not correct.
Okay.
Listen, first of all, several of those light-duty officers, like, for example, just to give you something that we're doing right now, and I thought we were going to get in a conversation about that, the telephone reporting unit. So we have worked with the fire department in getting that up and operational. They have built the necessary stations within the nine-one-one comm center. They have the phones and the computers, and we have already, and we are in the process of reassigning several four oh eight and limited-duty officers into that function, so therefore, they will be helping us to reduce our calls for service. I have some statistics. I think right now, we currently have three, but we're working with Major Hanley in identifying those individuals within the next, hopefully, within the week. We have an inception date for the telephone reporting unit, September sixteenth, when it will be fully operational. And we know that that's going to help us with, you know, with our efforts there and increasing our patrol response and less burdening on patrol. So I guess the point is, is that although these individuals are in a limited capacity or in a four oh eight capacity, we have them working in areas of the agency, and in some instances, areas that may necessitate a police officer. So we are, like, such as the evidence control section, where we have a lot of property and valuables and things of that nature there. There's staffing that's down there of limited-duty police officers and four oh eight officers that have to be there to take those inventories and make sure all of those things are done correctly, because we know that that evidence is used in court, and it needs to be chained to custody issues and all those things that's related to that. So there's several instances, I can, you know, there's a whole host of them. Where, you know, whether it's the City Watch program that we are looking at also, potentially doing some things there as well. It's just a whole host of different eight pieces without the department that we have to supplement the staff, and we're using those staff to the best of our abilities.
I'm not going to ask you more questions, thank you.
Thank you. This is obviously a, and I certainly understand where the Councilman is coming from on this, and, and part of the challenge that we've had from our side is trying to, good bless you, is trying to match up, trying to understand where everyone is and what everyone's tasked with. So I certainly understand the Councilman's concerns and questions. I know he's spent a great deal of time analyzing some complex data. Maybe this is something that we can pick up in more detail outside of the chambers, because there is a lot of detailed information here. I don't want to necessarily bog everyone down with the, you know, the nitty-gritty details.
Yes, sir, I'd be happy to work with you on that.
Why don't we, Councilman, if we could set up a time to meet with BPD outside of chambers and we can start to dive through this. This would probably take an hour, two hours of sitting down and looking at some spreadsheets and laptops and all that good stuff, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you. Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Deputy Commissioner and Mr. Chair. I'm not sure if this question is in line or not with the line of questioning we just had, but on the patrol strength report, there is a category for detailed-out, full-duty and non-full-duty. One, what does that mean, detailed-out, non-full-duty specifically?
If you're detailed out of patrol division, full-duty, that means you're working another assignment, and the paperwork for, the paperwork for you to be assigned is not complete yet, is not caught up in the system yet. So, like I explained earlier, we won't just leave you on a patrol chart, so that way, the number doesn't get conflicted, so it won't read one number, and then another number sits over here, and it's the identical number. So we just detail you out, and then when the paperwork gets to there, then you're assigned to that division.
Councilman, can I just ask a point of clarification? So essentially, you, I'm in one division, you've reassigned me to another division. That happens immediately, whether it's that day or the following workday. You remove that number from the division that I was in, you add it to the other division. You've got some clerical administrative paperwork-type stuff that needs to get done before that's all official. But the short of the story is, as soon as that order comes in from command, I'm moved, physically moved, and doing a different function or division.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Thank you. Councilman, I'm sorry.
And how would you delineate full-duty and non-full-duty in that context?
It's this, it's this, non-full-duty is a little different, because we will detail, like, like, what's, light-duty officers will detail from patrol division into an inside division.
Okay. The next question I had was around foot patrol assignments. In reviewing this, it appears that some districts have a good number, I'm looking at the Central and the Eastern, have nineteen between them, but then in Northeast, Northwest, and Western, there weren't any assigned, at least as of September fifth, is what I have on hand. One, how much flexibility do command staff have when making those assignments? And really what I'm trying to get at is, I'm sure my colleagues would agree, it's the number-one request that we get, or frustration that we hear from residents, is wanting foot patrol, especially on main corridors or problematic arteries in our communities. And so, you know, for example, it looks like in Central, which I get, for example, you'd have more in the Central District doing foot patrol, makes sense. But I wonder why there are none in a few others, or very, very little in others. And two, yeah, I'll, we'll stop there. I'll take two, man.
So, I would like to have foot officers in every single district. I would like to have foot squads in every single district. The reality is, we just don't have enough police to do that. So certain districts, you know, as you well know, the Central District has the Inner Harbor. They're going to have foot units. Southeast Baltimore, they have the waterfront. They're going to have foot units. Parts of the Northeast District are going to have foot units. Parts of every district has a foot, has foot officers. But yes, some districts are definitely more staffed than others.
So I think the frustration that people have, though, is that in many of these districts, Southwest, for example, we have some very problematic areas where folks feel that there are open-air drug markets that are allowed, and their words, not mine, allowed to occur, and feel that if they had more foot patrol, that would disperse some of the activity. And from my perspective, it seems that when that activity sort of hits full throttle, we then see violence, we see shootings. So I understand, and I don't have the crime data, but I know in the next, the next hearing we'll have for public safety, I'm sure we want to talk about the breakdown in violence. But I, without looking at it in front of me, I'd imagine Central District does not have the same level of violence. I know it doesn't, as a, the Southwest would or the Western would. So I'm trying to understand why then would we assign more foot patrol officers into an area that does not have the same level of violence or drug distribution or any other category that we would determine to be a problem.
I'm going to let the deputy answer that question.
All right.
Thank you, Colonel.
You've got a future in politics, sir.
He's a little too good, isn't he? Sir, I, I will answer that question by saying that, you know, when we look at, there's a lot of things that obviously go into what needs to occur from a deployment standpoint. And I would say, like, for example, in the Southwest District, and we understand that the violent crime situation that goes in there, particularly as it abuts the, in the tri-district and things like that, we have several, a vast amount of resources in that area. We have Southern District DAT team, Southwest District DAT team. We have the Tactical Division. We have MMU and a host of others that work in that small grid. That's just one example that we utilize, because it's a different type of deployment strategy that's needed for a particular area. One or two foot officers in that area will not lessen your violent crime and that issue. That, I don't think that's going to be effective.
So, okay, and I agree with that. I'm not, and I don't, I don't personally believe that foot patrol is the answer to resolving violent crime, but when I have to go into a community meeting and, or our Community Relations Council, I'm constantly saying, this is the first time I've seen these numbers, I'm saying, hey, they don't have enough officers to assign foot. But then when I look at the Central, and I'm like, wow, actually, we do have a large number of officers here, but I, there's not the same level of violence. I'm just trying to understand, from purely an allocation of resources, one would think that we would have a complete full-court press in areas that we know that the violence is occurring. And, and, yeah, Harbor East is a wonderful neighborhood, but we don't have the same level of need there to, from my perspective, I'm not an officer, to justify having, you know, nine in the Central or ten in the Eastern. And, and my apologies to my colleagues who represent those areas. I know you don't want anything pulled from those, but if people are literally dying in the streets in these other parts of the city, again, from a purely, we need everything, we need all hands on deck, why does the Western have none?
The Western has, well, the Western District does have-
I'm just looking at this, not, on September fifth, it says there's nothing there.
The Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative is there.
So just to clarify, and I'll answer it with the deputy, so real fast, Southwest District has two full DAT teams, which is two sergeants, twelve officers. Other districts don't. Northeast District, we actually pulled one of the DAT teams from the Northeast, put in the Southwest, because like the deputy was saying, that's a better way to attack that issue that's going on over the Southwest. And that goes throughout the city. The Northern District, Councilman Henry, and I apologize, we actually pulled one of his DAT teams out of the Northern and put into another district, because we felt his, the area that Major Gibson had wasn't like the area some of the other parts of the city have, to where we can attack that problem. And like the deputy said, yeah, some issues can be handled by foot, and some issues just can't. Case in point, the incident just happened in the, on Eager Street a few days ago, when the police commissioner and everyone else was down there, and a gunman came out of an alley and opened fire with the officers right in the block, walking foot. So it's, it's a very strategic thing to do, and sometimes we have to make those hard decisions. And I will stand by that decision to put DAT teams and operational components in areas where I feel like that we have to hit these individuals that are doing things to our neighbors that need to stop.
Okay. I mean, and even looking at that, though, it looks like Central has fourteen assigned, at least on this, what I'm looking at, for DAT, in addition to some of the highest foot patrol levels.
Well, the Central also has the Pennsylvania Avenue.
Okay.
So that's, and if anybody's been up and down Pennsylvania Avenue, I mean, you know,
I'm not going to debate you on that.
But yeah, so that's another issue.
Okay.
And that's a foot component there, in, on the Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative.
Okay. The, the other question I had was around the, back to the attrition piece. Are exit interviews conducted for officers when they leave? If so, who does that? And I know that you weren't prepared to, I know that at the next month's meeting, there'll be a lot more of a focus on this attrition assessment piece. But just wondering, you know, what are you hearing in these exit interviews? And how is that data used in our hiring practices, in our retraining practices? Or we talked a lot earlier about sort of the efforts around mental health and PTSD and other things that officers are dealing with. How is that information used?
So, to answer your question, yes, we are conducting exit interviews. I've been with the organization sixty days, so I'm just getting my hands around the data that's coming in. Exit interviews are voluntary. We ask the officers or anyone who's leaving to participate. They don't always participate. Those who we don't get to speak to in person with, we are now sending electronically a survey to them, so that, again, they could provide their feedback at their convenience. I don't have specifics that I can share with you at the moment, because I'm gathering that data, but I definitely can bring more. The purpose of exit interviews, as you're alluding to and understand, is to get more detailed information as to why someone's leaving, but what we can do better to make the work environment better for those who are here and staying. It's all about improving, getting that, that feedback from them. And so, whether it's improving the health and wellness that we're offering, or the working conditions, or morale, or whatever it might be, that's information I'm going to work with my team to gather, and then work with recruitment, and work with patrol, and work with the command staff and the leaders to make sure that we are providing a good work environment for those working. So I'm in the process, as a new member of the command group, to make sure that we're using that information effectively. So, I apologize that I don't have more to share today, but I hope to bring more later.
So, really quickly, am I to understand that this wasn't being done prior to you coming onboard?
No, yes, it was, sir. It was continuing to be done. There's, there was a vacancy for the director position for a period of time. And so I'm just getting my hands around all of that.
Okay.
Yeah, there was a gap of maybe six months, but some of the data that comes out of that is some of the things that have already been publicized about lack of technology, work schedules, pay. Those are all things that invariably come up, interview after interview, in some way, shape, or form. Technology was a big piece. That was always in the top three, for what I remember, from the earlier interviews, so when they were being conducted, like, the end of last year, when, basically, right when computers were about to be put in cars and things. And I think we're hearing less of that now.
I'd have to check the data, sir.
So, I guess for the next hearing, could we have information on that? One, how many people are voluntarily doing the exit interviews as a percentage of those who leave? A breakout of the types, I guess maybe the top five, things that you're hearing as far as feedback? And then if we could talk through some steps that have been taken? And I'm especially interested in, I mean, we can look at this year, but you've had some of the biggest attrition in, right after 2015, in those years, and it looks like there's a reduction, so something must be going on to reduce that average. So I guess it'd be just helpful for us to understand, or at least for me to understand, what changes have been made in sort of addressing that, those issues that arose after 2015.
Councilman, I would ask, if you could, if you could put all that-
I can put that in an email.
Yeah, and send that over to Chief Gillis and Chief Odell, and copy the three of us, and we'll just incorporate. Steve, if we can just get that plugged into the spreadsheet we've been working on, and moving forward, we'll just keep adding the requests to that spreadsheet so we have it all in one place. Thank you, Councilman.
That's it, that's all my questions.
Councilwoman Steed?
Thank you. Question for detailed-out. I know we have the amount of people, but it, can you say how many, like, for an example, when we talk about Hopkins Hospital, when we're talking about organizations, how many organizations, I guess, do we have that are detailed-out?
So any officer that is actually working around any type of facility is not detailed-out. They're actually in a district, working around that facility. So they wouldn't be incorporated in that number.
Oh, really? Okay, so if, would a city police officer then be in a Hopkins patrol vehicle?
Yes, if they work secondary employment, yes, they would be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We've got a couple more questions. Yeah, I just saw the news about a certain wide receiver from New York who got a pretty hefty signing bonus that was guaranteed money. And I was just thinking about some of the challenges that we've been having in the Police Department. I don't know why I use sports analogies all the time, but do we have any incentives in the Police Department for officers, any type of financial incentives or other performance incentives for officers who go a certain period of time without going on light duty or without- or without missing a shift? Because it seems like those are some of the triggers for additional overtime, or increased overtime spending, right? Does that make, does that make sense what I'm asking?
Yes, it makes perfect sense. Again, you know, we, listen, we need to do a real better analysis of this in order for us to be able to retain officers. I liked some of the points that were brought up here today, I know we were taking notes and we're going to revisit a lot of the suggestions that were made here today, so that we can really look at that. Councilman Pinkett, we talked about specifically about, you know, analyzing why are they leaving between that mark, and can we incentivize somewhere in that period? I think that's a great idea. We've talked about, well, I've spoken about, that the police commissioner, as well as the mayor, have already had preliminary conversations about that. You know, whatever we can do to kind of leverage the opportunity to keep the police, listen, we're all open for it, because we need them. And we want them to say, we've invested a lot of time in them, it's not really necessarily fair that they go over to another agency, and then they go over there, but it's not the same as policing in Baltimore anyway, so, you know, and hopefully they'll come back. And some have come back, by the way.
Yeah, we know that policing in this city is about as challenging of a job that you could have in this country, outside of probably serving in the military.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, it seems to, it seems to make sense that we reward the men and women that are consistently showing up.
Sure.
Consistently, you know, just showing up every single day, because we know that when folks get injured, or when folks are on that light duty, that's what drives their overtime. And Bob, I don't know, is this something that's come up in the, and I'm going to get to the status of the negotiations, but is that something that the city has considered in its negotiation process?
Yeah, it is, I mean, know that...
We currently have that, we have that if you don't take sick leave, for the first six months, you get four days, and then for the next six months, you get four more days.
Yep.
So, you can accumulate eight extra days if you do not call out sick for the entire year.
No, I understand that, but I think, and I appreciate that, and thank you for that clarification, I think I'm asking it from a different way. Instead of giving people time off, giving them a financial bonus, because it's more expensive when we give them time off, because then we have to figure out a way to fill in that gap, and we fill in that gap with overtime, and we know overtime is insanely expensive, and that's kind of what we're trying to wrap our arms around.
I think, to the Deputy Commissioner's point, it is, it is something, we need to have good data on where we would target that. In the last contract, there were bumps put into the contract at seven and 15 years. It sounds like, just at least anecdotally, from what we're hearing, it might actually be even earlier in the career that we have an issue. So, I think if we're to target some kind of financial incentive, yes, that's something we could look at. We would want to know, we'd have to have some data to say, where exactly would we target that incentive, whether it's in base pay bonus or what it might be, to make sure that it's effective.
And the, who was ma'am in the black blazer, or, you don't have to come up, no, no, you're good. You had talked a little bit about those exit interviews, so maybe there's a way to piece this together where we can create a financial incentive for those officers, and we need to get that early, we need to get that very early in the life cycle of their employment with the department, so that we're ensuring that we're increasing the likelihood that we keep them with the department, so they don't get separated, for whatever variety of reasons they would leave the department, we're just giving them another opportunity to not want to leave Baltimore City Police Department. So, can we, so, I know I'm kind of springing this on you, and this thought just came to me after reading about that wide receiver with the huge guaranteed bonus, can we talk about this a little more at the next hearing? Could you guys think about that? And what creative solutions we could come up with? Because I do think it is important that we reward those men and women that are doing an exemplary job, and are doing everything they can to show up every day.
I would just add to that, you know, as we go into contract negotiations, we try to look at, too, we look periodically at comparable data to see where we, you know, relate to those other jurisdictions. So, sometimes there is salary differences at certain parts of the scale, other times it's clearly not a salary issue. So, yeah, it's important for us to gather all the data, look at the comparables, look at what people are making in other jurisdictions versus the exit interviews, when they leave, is it later or earlier in the career, so we can target something. So, I think, I know that we've gathered this data as we went into contract negotiations, so we'll have, I think, a little bit more to share shortly.
Okay.
Definitely at the next hearing.
And I think if we could include that on the exit interview in a very targeted manner, such that if there were some type of financial bonus, separate from or instead of days off, is that something that would make you more likely to have stayed with the agency? So, with that, I'll roll into the more meatier question, Bob, can you give a status update on the negotiations? Or where things are at? I know you're somewhat limited in what you can say publicly, but if you could just tell us where we're at in the process?
Sure, we're in the process, we, there are additional sessions set up for later in September. I can say that the city has made a financial offer, and we've also put a proposed schedule on the table, that is still being worked between the parties, and I can't share more than that at this point, but I think we've made, I think both sides have made a lot of progress, we're kind of clear on which, where we stand, and, you know, by putting something on the table now, the union has a chance to react to that, and then if we can't come to agreement, then there are additional steps legally that we can take to try to move it along, to move it along the process.
Can you run me through just the next one, two, maybe three milestones in the process, and what we're looking at in terms of timing, without, obviously you can't divulge specifics, but what happens next? So, you've made an offer to the union, what's next? How long do they have to respond?
So, I should say first that, you know, all this, you know, the city always commits to negotiate in good faith, I mean, our goal is, of course, to reach an agreement, if we think it's reasonable and that it's affordable. We have put an offer on the table, there are back and forth, a lot of it just depends on scheduling of when all the parties can meet. You know, the next steps in the process, there is a provision that you have an outside person come in, a mediator, to try to bring the parties closer together. Sometimes, just from a negotiation standpoint, sometimes people can get locked into certain positions, so that's one option we have that we will pursue, to try to have an outside person bring us closer to an agreement, if we can reach one. From there, if there is a, if there just is a gap that we can't, that we can't overcome, the next step would be to have a fact finder come in, to basically analyze all the facts from the city's perspective, you know, look at the facts, where the union would present them, and make a determination of whether it's accurate on both sides. And then from there, the final step would be to go to that arbitration step, where you can't come to an agreement, you have to let an arbitrator decide what the final agreement is.
Got it. So, from a, from a process perspective, is there a reasonable expectation that we'll reach a new milestone before the next monthly hearing? Or are we...
I think, I...
Maybe we'll get word back from the union as to...
There will be, so there are sessions in September scheduled, so we'll have at least knowing coming out of that.
Some update.
Some update from there.
Okay, excellent. Drew, question for you, my understanding is that the, that we only have one vendor that handles the CityWatch cameras, and I believe we have two vendors that handle the fiber. Can you, I got to imagine, I got to imagine that that presents challenges for you, from a budgetary perspective?
So, thanks, Councilman, that is correct. The city has been working with the same vendor for maintenance of the CityWatch program for a number of years now. That has a lot of benefits, because that particular vendor has an extraordinary amount of background and knowledge about how our system operates, and kind of the history of the different camera networks throughout the city, and that, that experience can be invaluable as we seek to make repairs and seek to expand the network. That said, you know, and I've spoken about this before, much of the network was built out in earlier years, through the, you know, mid 2000s, with a lot of federal Homeland Security dollars that were very prevalent during that decade, kind of in the wake of increased security spending post 9/11. And those dollars have diminished over the years, to the point where we're really not getting much at all. So, you know, for the last, I don't know, five to seven years, the funding that we've had for CityWatch has been for maintenance of the network, not for expansion. What we found currently, though, is we're finding resources to do expansion, and so our needs are increasing again. Also, our system is aging more rapidly, so there are more maintenance issues as cameras get older, equipment wears out and needs to be replaced. So, we've got these increasing maintenance demands, we've got resources now to do some expansion, which we haven't had for a while. So, we've got the funding from Bloomberg to add cameras to the network, HABC is getting grants to add to their network, they just recently got one for Brooklyn Homes, so we're working on that. There are more applications they have pending, a big camera project is included as part of the Choice Grant that HABC just received for Perkins. We've got kind of ongoing, an ongoing stream of revenue, as you know, from the casino impact dollars, so we just completed a big expansion in Pig Town. There are more, there's more expansion planned along with that in South Baltimore, and then up in Northwest Baltimore as well, around Pimlico. So, we've got some revenue streams now to do this expansion, and what we're finding is that doing the maintenance of an aging system, and then keeping up with, you know, these expansions that we have planned, as well as just keeping pace with requests for new cameras and things like that, has been a challenge, given the current vendor structure and what their capacity is, despite the fact that they've been a great partner for us. So, what we're looking at doing is, you know, potentially, you know, that vendor's contract expires at the end of the year, we need to be thinking about the future. So, we're considering an RFI that puts out all of those needs that I just specified on maintenance and expansion, and kind of where we are at the program, to see what's out there, and how, you know, this critical function should be handled going forward.
Thank you, and I'd certainly like to commend Mayor Pugh and you and Kendra for your work on going out there and getting grant money and all that work, because it's something that's certainly necessary. Councilman Pinkett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had one more question related to the general overtime spending. I know that the chart that we received shows a decrease in the spending year-to-date, but when I look at the overtime spending for FY 2019, and look at it from pay period to pay period, it looks like there's, each subsequent pay period has been higher than the pay period one. So, is there, is there any concern related to it increasing, or, you know, every pay period?
It certainly could become a concern, it's not right now. We're still hitting under what we had set for our baseline, and we're under that 1.7, which would still result in a approximately 10% reduction overall. So, I don't expect that to keep going in that direction, especially as we head into the fall and winter.
Okay, so, what you're saying is that this increase may be just seasonal, not...
It's seasonal, and it also, it's really rather minor, I mean, especially when you look year over year over year, like, the last three years, you're looking at the reductions being consistent. They're going to vary, I mean, it's obviously a lot of money, but $100,000 up or down is a lot, but that's not unusual with the number of events and details and other, like, special things going on in the city that I've noticed.
And I'd also like to add to that would be violence. If you take a look over the past 28 days, we're 41% up in non-fatal shootings, which would also drive my overtime and investigations as well.
Okay.
If you look at the seven-day, we're up 56%, so it's still driving that crime and driving the overtime as well.
Where are we at with the special events issue that we discussed at the budget hearings in early June? We spent a great deal of time talking about looking at the policy that we have, and what the ratio of officers to attendees is, events vary, whether you have alcohol at the event, several geographical logistic, geographic logistical issues. Where are we at with revisiting that policy?
We are full steam ahead on that. I have a meeting that's scheduled, we're hoping to get in either in October or November. We, I spoke with Major Corbett about that. We have been kind of tracking this since I've gotten here a little bit, whereas we, in many instances, in some of the events that have occurred in the city, we've noticed that when we have to put assets, and in some instances, extraordinary numbers, we have Fleet Week coming up, there's a huge demand in terms of what our commitment is for a project like that as well, and how that correlates with our crime. And there has been, from what we're seeing so far, some challenges with that that we're addressing, but it's our hope that we can look at a plan that may introduce other assets, whether it's private security contract, whatever, to kind of offset those things. And another issue, obviously, is that, you know, our resources, we understand the demand and the drain that it puts on the agency to do that, so we just have to be smarter about it. I've already had a preliminary conversation with Major Corbett about that, and I told him what I want him to do, and we're hoping to meet, working through the mayor's office and the special events, and just have a real, open conversation about what we think that we can, how we can do that to improve that, make it a little bit more efficient for the Police Department. So, it is something, I don't know where it's going to go yet, but I will tell you that it is certainly the things that we're thinking about and conversations that we are about to have.
That's great, I certainly want to just make sure we're continuing to focus on that, because I know that can be a large drain on overtime spending. Bob, if I'm not mistaken, we budget 10 and 1/2, 10.7, 10.8 million dollars a year on special events for BPD, if that sounds right?
Yeah, it sounds about right. I mean, I've got it in front of me.
You don't have to confirm, I'm not making up a crazy number, though, that's plus or minus about right.
Yeah, you're in the range.
So, I just want to make sure we continue to focus on that, and that's one of the reasons, you know, I've had a large focus on auxiliary.
Yes, sir.
We have private security companies that can, that can supply public safety resources at a much cheaper cost, and I want to make sure that we're not shooting ourselves in the foot here by creating more of a demand, which results in an increased cost to the city and to the agency. So, can we, can we get another update on that next month?
Yes, sir.
We'd certainly like to make sure things are progressing. Councilman Burnett, did you have anything to add to that, before I go? Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Deputy Commissioner, before I go to my next question, since you're already standing, as you know, the online reporting and TRU reporting thing, to me, is one of the most important things, is it concerns response time for the citizens of Baltimore. Did you say earlier that you guys have a full implementation start date for that?
In terms of the telephone reporting unit, so we, the telephone reporting unit has already been in play. It just wasn't, for some reason, it wasn't staffed. From a logistical standpoint, you know, it was placed literally almost in a closet within the communications floor. One of the things that I directed was to put it on the main floor, in a workspace that's conducive to working, and then we're staffing it. So, we've already talked about, Major Hanley and Lieutenant Eflin are working hard in terms, as well as Lieutenant Colonel Worley, who oversees the Communications Division, to staffing that up. The Fire Department has been very helpful with us, we've had conversations with them, and ongoing conversations. They came in, they brought their team in, we put all new consoles up, computer workstations, the whole nine. So, right now, and I'll just read a couple highlights here, so since June 12th, we reduced unnecessary reporting by 40%. Incident reports are not required for unfounded calls for service where there is not a UCR, Uniform Crime Report Eligible Crime. There is not a victim complaining, and there is not any evidence to recover. Members will provide an oral code in accordance with the policy 104, incident reporting, please adhere to the policy. And again, these are the policies that we've kind of put in play. So, to TRU, the current staffing right now is actually staffed with two sergeants and two officers. March, with this staffing, March through June 2018, the telephone reporting unit orally handled 2,283 calls for service and wrote 342... and wrote three hundred and forty-two reports. July through September, the telephone reporter unit orally coded three thousand three hundred and fifty calls for service and wrote three hundred and ninety-nine reports. We are anticipating a go-live date for the fully staffing of the telephone reporting unit in, uh, conjunction with, uh, policy that has already been in play with the agency. Um, and that staffing, the space has already been prepared. As I discussed, the transfers were working through that process. Uh, the telephone rec, uh, reporting unit staffing will be about twenty-five light-duty officers, uh, four light-duty sergeants, and we're projecting, um, that it will save us about two hundred and forty thousand calls for service with just that staffing. And then again, obviously, uh, we have to have conversations about, um, other things that we can do to alert the public and a more robust plan in terms of utilizing the app and all those other things that we kind of touched upon before. So we're gonna be working with the mayor's office as well as the council and others to try to put something in play to educate them because we know that we need to be operating more, uh, efficient within the agency, and this is just one of those steps.
Hold on. Com, Deputy Commissioner, uh, a couple of follow-ups on that and, and thank you that this is, is final, finally happened after five, five, now five, five years ago when we asked for this to happen. A few things. One, and I'm saying that because I see, uh, the Colonel standing behind you. Uh, I don't know if it's possible, uh, if we could take those amount of reports that the T R U did and do a similar analysis that is art, like is automatically done through Cop Logic, the online system that calculates demand hours and the dollars saved per, per report. So I think if you could get with the Colonel about that, I think that would be a great thing. I don't know if there's a way to do it, to do it or not, but the online system does that. But also, so with this being in play, just a couple of questions. So when, and do you have an estimated date to the fully sta, full staffing yet?
Well, it's, it's a priority for us. Um, and, uh, I don't even think, oh, I'm sorry?
Sunday.
Ooh, Sunday.
Okay, great. Good, y'all know I'm gonna try this on Sunday. So on Sunday, let's just say Sunday night, I call in to nine-one-one because people call nine-one-one for non-emergencies because that's what we have trained them to do in Baltimore, unfortunately. And I try to file a report for a lost knee from auto. Are all the people that are answering those phone calls gonna automatically say, "We would advise you to file that report this way"?
It's scripted.
So how does this script go?
Uh, I don't, I don't have it, but, uh, I know Lieutenant Eflin has worked on it. I don't know if you have it with you, Lieutenant, but, yeah, we, we recognize, uh, that issue. And as a matter of fact, that's.
Well, to me, it's not, to, to me, Deputy, it's not an issue because this is the thing. If we are still allowing or suggesting to people that their, 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 the number-one response is gonna be to send an officer out, then that's what they're gonna.
It's counterproductive, yes, sir.
That's counterproductive. We should be directing them to either file a report online or file a report through T R U so that first and foremost, they don't have to wait three hours to get a report for a lost knee from auto because they call, you know, on sea shift and they're gonna have to wait forever.
Yes, sir.
But also so that we can use our resources more efficiently. So that's why I asked a question. I want to know how we, how we're gonna roll this out to the public. I think for me, the last response should be when they say, "Okay, I don't want to do that." Then we say, "We want to send an officer out." But we, our duty is to explain to them what, how we can serve them in the most efficient and effective way. And we have to, we're gonna, all of us are gonna have to do, uh, some recontinuing education, as we like to say, for our citizenry when we tell them, because we have brainwashed people to think that even if I call the police about someone slashing my car tires twelve hours later, that just because an officer came out and took a report, that we're gonna be more likely to catch that person. When all of us know that actually if I file that, the faster I get that report and the faster we get the data and we can analyze the data and have resources deployed in the areas where that, those incidents will happen, that's how we'll actually catch that person. But as long as we're allowing people to overbear us and, and, and patrol with these calls for service that we already know we don't have the officers to, to go out to, I think that we're gonna be seeing it. So that's my question. How, how are we going to retrain the call-takers, et cetera, to push folks to that? And then I think that it, it's a good thing that we're having this conversation because I think that that's something that the mayor's office, the council, the department should actually work together on getting out into the communities.
Yes, sir.
And yes, we're gonna get yelled at, we're gonna get screamed at. We, we know that that's gonna happen, but we have to explain to people like, okay, we didn't make it this way, but you've been lied to for all these years because that's essentially what people have been doing to these people.
Yes, sir. So Lieutenant Eflin, could I, I know that, uh, could you just talk a little bit about how that process works once a call comes into the nine-one-one center and also the work that you and Lieutenant Colonel Worley have been doing, uh, on this effort? Thank you.
Good evening, Lieutenant Eflin.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. So, um, when the caller calls into nine-one-one, um, what will happen is our electronic system, our CAD system, it automatically sends the call to the dispatcher that is responsible for that area, and there's nothing we can change about that. So what happens is the calls are then reviewed by the T R U supervisor, and then they are given to the officers in T R U, not electronically, but by hand. And immediately, the citizen is called back. Um, we have met resistance, uh, with retraining call-takers, and we've looked into some scripts. Um, but the way that the calls are pulled off the screen, there's no delay. Um, so the last time we did this was about three years ago. Um, we did, um, a, a couple stories with the Sun and I think Fox forty-five. And so if we could just do a couple of those again, I think that that will get the word out there that if you have these types of crimes, and this is a little bit more robust, as the deputy was saying, this isn't just T R U, this is Cop Logic, this is the app, this is the whole deal. So, um, I, I think a couple news stories and maybe an interview, as we did last time, would, would, uh, help with the citizens.
Mr. Vedder, can, can you work with the department and, and fire about the retraining of the, of, of the folks? Because I think that for me, this doesn't work without the call-takers and folks being trained properly. So I don't, I don't understand why they would meet resistance in, in, in that, in that sense and also because it can, it'll cut down a layer because they could just be directly trained. I mean, it's right around the corner, so it's not like this, is, these are two foreign lands. I think that if we could make that happen, that would make this more efficient.
I think also the process for nine-one-one is when it is a non-emergency call, the call should be transferred to three-one-one.
Same thing.
So the script that nine-one-one, um, would say may not even change because they should be saying, or they, their, their process currently is to place them on hold and, or not place them on hold, I'm sorry, is to transfer them to three-one-one, make sure that they're connected, and then disconnect when they're in. So.
And they should be trained as well to then defer it to T R U or show people the website, et cetera, et cetera.
And three-one-one.
We'll, we'll discuss that with the department.
I'm sorry?
I was just responding to the councilman's question about, uh, his, his request for us to help coordinate. We'll discuss in, in more detail outside of the hearing.
Three-one-one had stopped taking police reports also, and so that's gonna be reinstated, um, right around the middle of September as well. They're in the middle of another training session, but as soon as they're done that. And then the other thing that we've done is, you know, our process is all paper. Um, we've, uh, automated that so where the officers are actually gonna have their own login along with three-one-one to put the, um, reports into Cop Logic. So there's no paper process on the backend, which will really help with that as well.
I got another question, but.
It's on, um, while I appreciate everything that you've said, I think we can do much more and at very little expense. Um, for example, one of the things D P W does is they send out, uh, mailers for various things, um, uh, like with the HomeServe, uh, pipe insurance. So first, uh, we, we send out water bills every month. Um, can we get an insert, uh, included in, in the water bill for every property address in the city explaining this with a one-pager? Um, second, B P D has enormous social media, uh, reach. Twitter, I think you guys are at like two-hundred-and-thirty thousand followers. I strive to be like you one day. Um, you also have, um, nine different, uh, district Facebook pages, as well as a Facebook page that has something like two-hundred-and-fifty thousand likes on it. Um, could we start an aggressive social media campaign to start informing people with a very, um, simplified, uh, message that's maybe a paragraph along with, uh, an explanation of what you should be doing when, uh, you're reporting these types of crimes? Because as Councilman Scott said, we, we get yelled at all the time, as I know that the mayor's office does, the council president's office does, um, when a cop doesn't, when a police officer doesn't show up. Um, and it, it's actually appropriate that a police officer's not showing up because we're trying to create, uh, these efficiencies and be more effective in how we handle these things. We want that real-time data so that your men and women have that information so they can track trends and, and essentially catch the bad guys, uh, before they do anything else bad. Uh, so we've got the mailers. We have the Gov Delivery, uh, email list. Um, when you sign up for Gov Delivery, there's.
Text, Mr.
There's, but isn't there like two-hundred different categories of emails? You could, you could get, there's a Parking Authority email list for each R P P area. Um, if we want, we have enormous reach, uh, the, the machine of city government to get to our citizens. Um, so we can start, uh, doing that. I think if you send something out to the council members with that one-pager, uh, short message, we can disseminate that to all of our lists. I know the mayor has a very extensive email list, as does the council president. Um, there are opportunities for three-one-one call-takers at the end of the call to let constituents know, even if they're calling in about a pothole, "Hey, by the way, Mister, Mister Jack or Miss Jill, did you know that you can file this report, uh, in this manner so that we can make our police department more efficient and better serve you and keep your neighborhood safe?" Uh, colleagues, what else am I missing that we could do in terms of outreach here? We have a number of, um, the mayor hosts a number of, uh, summer block parties during the summertime. No reason we can't have a stack of five-hundred pieces of paper that explain this. "Hey, kids, bring this, bring this home to mom or dad or your guardian." We have Charm TV. Um, we should be doing a very aggressive media blitz in terms of the news stories. And while I certainly appreciate what you said, uh, respectfully, it's just not enough. We, you know, we should have every single news outlet running this for five days straight. Uh, there's no reason we couldn't take out an ad in the Baltimore Sun and other print publications. So these things are all low-cost and they have a very high, uh, return in taxpayer savings. Um, so this is rolling out on Sunday?
Yes.
Yes, the staffing portion of it, uh, the staffing transfer.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so can we, can we at the next, uh, council meeting and recognizing that while this is rolling out Sunday, it's gonna take some time to get folks up to speed on, on what the new protocol is for how to handle these, can we have a itemized list at the next hearing of all those different things in terms of outreach that we've done, um, to folks? Can, Bob, can you, um, get with, uh, Director Raymond? Because he's the one, or it's, the Department of Finance is sending out the water bills on getting an insert put in there. I know we've done inserts before for other things.
Sure, on the mailer, um, yeah, we can work with the police department to give them the right, uh, contact and revenue collections because they're the ones that insert them before they go out.
We also have the Department of Planning's, uh, Community Association Directory, which has about nine-hundred contacts in it. No reason that we couldn't have Department of Planning send an email out, uh, to every single community leader in the city saying, "Can you please share this with each of your respective, uh, constituencies?" We have pretty far reach with our, what's that?
Office of Neighborhoods.
Office of, Mayor's Office of Neighborhoods, same with the council, uh, president's Office of Neighborhoods. Um, we have, uh, one, two, through five different community benefits districts in the city. I know Downtown Partnership is able to touch, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood of eighty to a hundred thousand people, uh, through all their respective lists. I can talk to Kirby Fowler about disseminating that to all the folks, uh, that are on that email list and asking each of those respective employers to let their, uh, employees know. Colleagues, anything else that, um?
Uh, Nextdoor?
Nextdoor, yep.
Nextdoor.
Not only Nextdoor, but, um.
Circulator X.
Circulator X. Uh, Nextdoor, we have, uh, various agencies besides B P D that are on Nextdoor. Um, Kendra, Karen, do you think that's something we could ask each of our respective P I Os at D O T, D P W, Rec and Parks?
Yeah, I, the mayor's office could coordinate a communications marketing plan.
Okay, that, that would be a, a huge help to get the word out because we're, we're gonna save some serious money here if we, if we handle this right and make sure that we educate people. And I think it's key to, uh, hammer people over and over and over. It's not just gonna be one email. Um, it might be sending out an insert in the next two or three water bills. It might be, uh, continuing to blast it out on social media, news stories, et cetera. Um, so we, we oftentimes in government fail at, and it's not just everyone here, it's us. I, I know I fail every day at it and need to get better at it, but in terms of outreach and communicating, we just gotta communicate it over and 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 over.
Yes, sir.
On the same page?
Here we are.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Scott?
Thank you. Uh, my next question, Deputy Commissioner, when, uh, Commissioner Togo took over, he, uh, talked to the council about, uh, the, the, uh, ongoing, uh, information and investigations involving, uh, those officers who are, individuals who are still with the department in reference to, uh, the Gun Trace Task Force, uh, cases. Do we have an update on that? Do we have, how many people are, were, that were connected or still here? Uh, we know that there's some one in particular who I believe should not be, uh, in the department nor where he's located in the department. But do we have an update on how that's going, how that's progressing? Have we, are we fifty percent done with following up on the things that were mentioned in the trial? Are we twenty percent? Where, where are we with that?
I'm sorry, sir, I, I do not have that information available, um, at this time, but I'm sure it's something that we can get, uh, back to you.
Thank you. Can you, it can, if you guys could have, uh, someone follow up with us by next week? I could, I think that would be good.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And my next question goes back to the, the sheet.
Earlier?
Where we, where we say that we had a fifty-six officers suspended total in July and now seventy-two. So in previous, uh, previous years when the, they would come before us, that would be broken down for the reasons why they were suspended. So if you guys could send that over to the council as well. And then, and really then also if you can give us a, a look back to see how that was in the months preceding. And then the same thing for the, the, uh, terminations. So it was two for both months, to, just to see how that's been going over time. If it's been steady in one, steady at two, or goes from two to six to one. My guess is that it's consistent, but I just want, we just want to make sure that, that the numbers are, are lining, lining up for us. And then my, my last, last question to go back, back to my, my colleague's point. Uh, Deputy Commissioner, you know that the, uh, what is now known as the, the Hopkins deployment has been a hot-button item for the council president, uh, and others, and myself and others, Councilwoman Snead on the council. How many, uh, deployments like that one do we have in the department?
Other deployments, sir?
Yeah, other deployments, other than Hopkins.
When you say other than Hopkins.
So, so just like we have the twelve officers that are assigned to the, the Hopkins footprint, how many other deployments like that speci, are specific to organ, institutions or particular areas of the city do we have?
None that I'm aware of, sir, but I do know that we have contingencies at, uh, various areas within the city, whether it be, uh, Harbor East or whether it be the Harbor or Downtown, Midtown. Uh, we do have other contingencies. And generally, those contingencies align with, um, with, uh, neighborhoods or communities, whereas, um, there is some sort of violent crime or some sort of crime that's occurring, uh, within or around that, uh, area.
And so it did, I know that you didn't make the decision. Uh, so the, the rationale given by then Commissioner Davis was that this was done as a response to historic crime levels, correct?
I would only surmise that that was the. I would only surmise that that was the thought process behind it.
Thought process? So in your judgment, Deputy Commissioner, seeing as though that was 2017 and that historic crime levels was happening literally in every single block of the city of Baltimore. How can we, well, one of two, a few things, how can we, knowing that patrol is short and, and in addition to that, knowing that we're seeing this kind of violence throughout the city, pick particular places over another for it to happen?
So sir, I think that, and again, as you've indicated, that that decision has already been made. I would also say that if you really look at recently what's been occurring, particularly around the Johns Hopkins Hospital campus, the violence that Colonel Garrity spoke of and other instances that's happening in or around Clay Court, there certainly seems to be justification for officers to be assigned in that area to deal with the violence that's occurring there. So to that being said, and the commissioner's decision is obviously final in that, that's how we will proceed on carrying that out, sir.
And so I asked that question to follow up on my colleague, Councilmember Burnett's point from earlier. Because it would seem to me, and even from the list that you gave, that, that when we look at how these units are given out, I would guess, for example, we know that, for example, the Harbor unit, right? When you have a place that's going to consistently have a large influx of people, you have to adjust from that because just the simple realities of humans is that the more people you have in the area, the more things that are going to happen, right? Conflict, all these other things are going to happen. So when we have that and then we're also considering crime. But what doesn't add up for us on this side of the table is that that seems to only be the case for certain areas of the city. So for example, if you're using that, 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 that way of thinking, we would think that we would see the way that that and some of the other units are assigned would be a little different. Let's just take, for example, not to be a homer here tonight, but for the largest district in the city to have just six people assigned to that, right? So that means, and you and I know that, you and I know this, is that the that in the Northeast basically is there to deal with Chum and Bella Edison as they should be, right? Because we know that if they are not there, we know what's going to happen there. But we all also know that, and in that vein, I want to thank yourself and Colonel Conway for the assistance that you guys have provided with dealing with the issues in Sedonia. But there are about 10 to 15 other areas like that as well that don't have, that are going to never see that. They're never going to see any resources. Whereas there are other districts that have 24 people in that or 12 in that or 24 people in that and, you know, they have, there are zero foot officers in the Northeast District. Zilch, nada. This, and when you look at that, the same is, the same is the case for the Northern District, right? When you look at this, what this screams to the citizens is inequity and you can't look at it any other way, right? Because when you look at the numbers, the numbers are there, the calls for services are there, the violence is there, everything else is there. And we have to start to reallocate resources in a different way because we, we can't do it this way anymore. Because what's happened is we are losing neighborhoods that were not violent, right? Because we know if you continuously put police officers in the same place over and over and over again, any criminal that has any half a brain is going to do what? They're going to move. They're going to move. And that's why you see folks who are rested way out on the boundary lines who like district commanders are like, "I don't know who this person is. I don't know where they, they've never been arrested in my district before." And we are not, in my opinion, adjusting to that. We are continuously yielding to, to institutions and particular people in the cities and area of the city that even when, and you're right, recently that has been the case for the Hopkins, Hopkins detail. And again, for the record, I'd like to say that with the council members who wrote the letter along with the president were simply saying is that the Eastern District Commander should be able to assign those officers based off the crime data. And although the commissioner and others have said different, all of us in this room know that if Major Wells moves those people from out of that footprint, no matter what's going on anywhere else, he will be reprimanded. So anything else is simply a lie. We have to do better. And how are we going to do that? What are we going to do differently when we're allocating these other resources to see so certain areas are not getting nothing and everywhere else is getting everything?
So just to touch on the Northeast District, yes, they have one that team of six. They've also had another unit, which is a Major K Squad that worked on several areas up there, you know, for Colonel Conway. There's also other things that we do do with Colonel Conway's shop in the Patrol Division and you're right. Yes, we need more of the, I'm an operational type of person, but under the consent decree, what we're going through now, it's the Patrol Division, the Patrol Division. And it's, it's definitely a fine line we have to walk in order to, you know, meet what the federal judge is saying we have to meet. But yes, without question, yes, there are certain parts of Northeast Baltimore that they'll never see a that team. They're just not going to. For me to sit there and say they will is, you know, and there's other parts of the city that we see the same thing. And you're right, getting hit up in the 6,000 block of Bel Air Road or Hartford Road for a shooting is crazy and it is because we're displacing people.
Well, let me, let me add on to this and just for clarity. So our crime strategy and how we deploy, it directly coincides with the violence based on what we're seeing. I mean, that's just a true and proven tactic that we keep in play. The mayor's, as you know, the VRI zones where the city has historically taken large hits with violence, homicides and shootings. Those specific geographical areas, a lot of not just police department, but other city agency resources have been poured into those areas. Do we expect that in all instances that we're going to completely eliminate a homicide and shooting? No, but I can tell you unequivocally, and Kendra, you could probably weigh in here, I believe like right now we're down 33% in violent crime in all of those districts. The new one that we just put in, in the Southern District is actually in the Brooklyn area, has a real significant reduction in crime. Although we do know that there's some other things that challenges that are down there that are going to necessitate Colonel Conway's shop. The reality is, is that the tactic and the deployment strategy for the agency has and will be to put resources where violent crime is, where we have those, whether historic patterns, but even more importantly, where we have patterns that are emerging. And our ability to be flexible to redeploy assets, no matter who you are. When I first came here in the early months, I took police from one side of the city and put them on the other. That's just what we have to do. So I'm not, again, you know, everything is on the table as far as I'm concerned. Whatever we need to do to drive the crime numbers down in the city, that's what we're going to do. I talked to Colonel Stanfield today. I even have all of his staff out working. I said, "I don't want anyone else in the building but us." So as much as we can do that and as much as we can, you know, redeploy our assets and using that crime data analysis and being able to do that, that's what we'll do.
It's crime driven.
I think we're going to switch hearings in a second here.
Yes, sir.
Colleagues, any other questions budget related? Thank you all very much. I do definitely want to spend some time talking about the, what the outreach, what outreach we've done to date on the, on the phone reporting at the next hearing. So please be prepared to discuss that as well as the other follow-up. If, what's it? About the outreach? Yeah, maybe we'll, Deputy Commissioner, we can set up a, I don't, yeah, Karen, can we set up, it'd be best to do it through you. Can we set up a meeting, Councilman Scott and I, with you, Drew, Kendra, whoever at Finance who handles the water bills, your folks in comms, just all the right people so we can talk about that? All right. Thank you very much. We're going to go into recess on this hearing. We'll be back next month. We will, Councilman Scott and I will be in touch to set up a new date because obviously the date we had set is like three weeks out, so that doesn't make sense. I know that BPD wanted to do this the second week of the month, so we'll be in touch at some point later this week, once we coordinate with our schedules and Councilman Pink and Council President Young. So with that, this hearing is in recess until next month. We're going to take a quick two-minute break and then Councilman Scott's going to start up.